Some other members of council to join. And just a reminder to those joining us, if you could make sure that you're on mute. If you're not speaking at the, at the time, it would be greatly appreciated. And also to those who wish to make comment at the comment period, you can find the appropriate link on our city website. It should be one of the first notifications on the homepage. So that, that would be the way that you would be able to make comment. And I believe we're still waiting for one of our, our council members to join. And once again, thank you for your patience as we start with a new process in this webinar forum. To be able to hold a, a safe council meeting at a distance. Okay, so seeing that all members are present, we will reconvene from closed session. Any items to report?
Nothing to report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. As you join me, please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by council member Carrillo. Followed by an invocation, so please remain standing.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, salute. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, is there anyone who would like to lead us in an invocation? If not, let's take a moment of silence for your intentions. Okay, thank you, you may be seated. Okay, at this point in the agenda, it looks like we have a presentation.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have one presentation this evening, which is going to be presented by Turning Point of California, Central California, pardon me. And we should have with us Jody Ketch aside this evening.
Hello, Jody, are you there?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, go ahead and proceed, please.
Okay.
Welcome.
I had a little bit of an unmuting problem, but. So I wanted to update you on what Turning Point of Central California is doing in Porterville these days. We have been operating Casa de Robles 3, which is a permanent supportive housing project for about almost four years now in Porterville. And I wanted to share with you that our last operating year's outcomes, what they were, we have 12 beds or units dedicated to that program. So we served 16 people and 13 households in our last operating year. With 100% of folks leaving, that left the program going to permanent housing situations. Which, as all of you know, is a big challenge. And Porterville's units have been a little bit hard to find lately, so we were excited about that outcome and people being able to move on. To permanent destinations. As all of you know, we opened the Porterville Welcome Center in August. Since opening in August, we have served about 80 people a day. It started with about 40 coming in the first week or two and graduated from there. So we are currently case managing 65 people experiencing homelessness. We've housed two people. Since opening the shelter beds in November, we have sheltered 33 folks. With, with 12 exits, so that's there's some bed turnover there. As people either move on or determine that they, that, you know, the program isn't for them. We serve about 80 meals a day at the program. In. November, we saw 540 unduplicated people come to our doors for services. In December, that number went up to 790. And in January, it was 827. So these are all people experiencing some kind of homelessness, whether they're on the streets or they're kind of precariously housed. And unable to, to provide for their own meals. So they come in, we get a little bit of time with them to be able to get to know them, have them kind of start warming up to case management services. And, and at least getting vouchers and things so that they can become. Eligible for housing when they do decide that, that, that's something they want to pursue. So we've been doing. Quite a bit of relationship building, we do have, I think I've shared with some of you about. A guest that we had that would come in and the staff helped her dye her hair and. I've shown her how to do makeup and stuff and we're actually not seeing a lot of her yet because she had, she made an arrangement. With one of the motel owners and she is staying there rent free, so she's moved on, I think she's doing some work for them. And at some point, since I don't know how permanent that situation is going to be, at some point, we're hoping that we can coax her into shelter. But I thought that was a good kind of anecdotal story for how important those day services are for folks that aren't quite ready to trust that. That shelter is something that will lead to ending their homelessness, because not everybody believes that that's the case. So if there are any questions for me, I can take them now.
Great, thank you. Council, were there any, any comments or questions that you had for, for Jody?
Mayor, I would like to comment.
Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, and first of all, I would like to thank. Jody Ketch aside for the services that we are having at the navigation center. I know that there were some stresses in the initial opening right before COVID, but that was having to do with getting the fire suppression and everything. But to be able to be in operation now. One of the questions that I am going to ask Ms. Ketch aside, because I know that she's very proactive. And I'm gonna highlight on the simplicity of. Big issue of mental, and the homeless come in with regard to mental health and the accessibility to that agency. Are they willing to be participants to that regard?
So if, if, are they willing to participate in mental health services? Sometimes.
Some, that, that was my question, because my understanding and I. Does my understanding, it depends on where they are mental health.
Correct, we see a lot of people that come in and, and you know, they, they have been on meds and they, you know, they're out. And so they are interested in, in figuring out how to get those refills. But we also have people that come in that have never had any mental health services. And so sometimes that takes some relationship building on our end, so that they trust us that we're not. Referring them to somewhere where they're gonna get locked away forever, or you know, all of the things that people sometimes might be afraid will happen. And so we work really hard to try to link people up when they're, you know, ready to be linked up. We can't force that service, but, so it's really kind of a 50/50 type of deal. Sometimes they come in ready and have used mental health services before and they're, and being linked up is welcome and other times it's not.
Thank you for that, and I hope you stay on and listen, because some of us will be reporting now. On some of the. I ended up homeless roundtable and a lot of information was gathered in. I know that we're not the only city that is perhaps in the same situation, so I hope you'll stay on and you'll be able to hear us out on some of that. And I do know that I was not at the Tulare County Task Force for Homelessness, but my alternate was, and she'll be reporting out too. So I would hope that you would be able to listen to some of the things that we'll be reporting out.
Sure, I'll stay on.
Thank you so much.
Your Honor, I have a question for.
Yes, council member Stowe.
Good evening, Jody, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Thank you for the work that you do, I just have a couple of questions. You gave us some numbers, but how often is the turnover and are most of them staying until they find permanent housing?
So we are really new on the sheltering plea piece, we opened in November for that. We have seen some turnover, like I said, we saw 12 beds turnover. And typically, we see about, in other communities, we see about 10% and it's starting to look like. That that's kind of the trend that we're going to see. But also, when you first open a program, there are a lot of people that will come into shelter and then realize, ooh, like I, you know, this isn't for me. So those turn, the, our 12 bed turnover happened rather quickly in the beginning, so we're really still looking at that trend.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I did have a comment and a question.
Please proceed.
Alrighty, well, thank you, Jody, again for coming to join us today to give us a presentation of what's going on with the navigation center. Really grateful for the services, I've had the opportunity to, to check out the navigation center more than a couple of times and taking some folks, myself. To get, to learn about the services out there and. I, I was just curious to know if, if by any chance, is there a, a time, timeline, a timeframe where. I don't know if there's gonna be a caseworker manager, manager there, or if there is already, but how is that going? Or if it hasn't started, is there like a timeline to, to, to get a case management worker on the site to help folks? Or what does that look like for in the future at the navigation?
So we are currently funded for a case manager and she was in there, her name was Donna, she was in there. Until about a week ago and she promoted to a director position. And so we have that, we have hired for that to replace her. She hasn't started yet, so I think we're looking at like a, a week. Depending on how fast things come back, the pre-employment testing, but she should be starting within about a week and. That, that's who's case managing, the people that stay in shelter. And then the day services, because we're only funded for one case manager and we're seeing like 80 people a day. And then the day services, because we're only funded for one case manager and we're seeing like eighty people a day. Um she can't single-handedly case manage all of them, so we have Kings Tulare Homeless Alliance coming in consistently now, beginning this week, and um are utilizing, you know, like PATH, well, Kings Viewers PATH will come in and work with their clients. So with the people that are just accessing day services, our case management is a little lighter, like I said. Getting them document-ready and helping them with with getting their vouchers together to go to the DMV, that sort of thing. And then the folks that are in shelter and bridge housing are getting super housing-focused case management. So that we can turn those beds and get those other people in them.
Yeah, thank you so much uh for for that. Um and the last question I had was uh since uh August being opened and uh for day services in November for providing um beds to folks. From from then to now, uh we're at the beginning of February, what what do you think are some of the, you know, maybe your top one challenge that you foresee right now from everything that's been happening on the ground?
Aside from COVID, which is a challenge for everything we're doing in life every day. I would say that the availability of housing inventory, um to be able to move folks on. And um, you know, people who are willing to take a risk on someone applying for housing that may have a spotty rental history or um, you know, their income isn't quite three times the rent, uh that so so really like getting folks into housing where they're able to stay in Porterville is a is a challenge, because there's not a ton of availability.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Anytime housing gets competitive, because there's not much vacancy, um we see, you know, then we have a lag in being able to move folks who are experiencing homelessness into housing.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a comment and a that will lead to a question.
Sure.
Okay, uh I would like to ask uh Jody, Ms. Ketch aside. It was my understanding that there was an outreach from the county to the Navigation Center with regard to providing services. Has that communication happened? Because it was, I believe that they were going to also be able to provide some onsite services. And I just need to know where that's at, if it's happened, if not, it's probably something I need to pursue.
So Tulare County um did offer to have an eligibility worker onsite. Um those conversations have gone back and forth, but we don't, we don't yet have an eligibility worker onsite. We, I I suspect that maybe because we got um hit with a little bit of COVID for a while there, and so I think people were holding off. But yes, the plan is to have an eligibility worker there. We don't currently, though, and that person will be able to link people up with medical, EBT, and all of those mainstream benefits.
Well, I want to thank you, thank you so much. I want to thank you for that, because that was a discussion that initially we began, I began, in having those discussions. And I believe it's time just to follow through and uh see where we go. Thank you so much for that information.
Sure, and I do want to point out that we have been able to house two successfully, which may not sound like a lot. But we did that while we were doing the day services, which is really kind of a testament to the relationships the staff were able to build, because when you're doing services during the day, you have to count on people to come back. Um because they're not sleeping there, and so we were able to house both of those folks in the early fall.
Okay, uh Councilmember Carrillo, did you have any any comments or questions?
Jody, I just want to say thank you for your work. I I appreciate the numbers that you gave and the data about the progress that you're making. Um I took a lot of notes. I think um I would love to be able to visit and talk some more just about partnerships and um how you are reaching out to get more resources for the families. And see how we could further work together. So um at some point, I would like to be able to do that.
Okay, that sounds great, just let me know. I my uh Jason has my contact information.
Okay.
Okay, great. As as well, I'd like to thank you, Jody, for your your hard work and your great leadership onsite. And I know it's something that uh at the city, we've been uh striving to to get to the the point where we can have a little bit more information and see what uh the new directions we can all travel together are. So again, I'd like to thank you for the report, and I look forward to someday visiting the site um in the near future.
Yeah, sounds good, come on over.
Thank you, all right. Did the city staff any have any comments or anything, or should we just go ahead and move move forward?
Uh I just want to say thank you to to Jody for all of her work and and uh really being a passionate and um strident supporter of getting the Navigation Center. Uh even to the point of opening when we didn't have the fire suppression there and the commitment to provide services to to folks that needed the assistance. Kudos to her and 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 all the folks at Turning Point for being great partners in getting this uh the first of its kind uh Welcome Center open in Tulare County.
Indeed, uh thank you for that and uh appreciate the presentation. And and once again, I wanted to let anybody know on viewing the the meeting on YouTube uh that there is a way to participate as we move uh branching closer to the oral communications, or in this case, electronic communications. The easiest way to do that, if you would like to communicate with the council during this upcoming portion, you can search City of Porterville. Um and you'll probably find our homepage, if not, it's www.ci porterville.ca.us. And right under the special notice on the homepage, you will find instructions on how to log into Zoom and join us on the webinar as a as a speaker for the uh public comment portion. There's about a five-second delay, uh so you may um engage on Zoom and and hear the public comment underway. But you can still participate as uh I expect that there will be a few comments uh before you have a chance to log in. So with that, we can move into the or uh oral communication portion of the agenda. Have you received any communications?
Your Honor, at this time, um I would like to open it up to the attendees who are in attendance right now to see if they would like to raise their hand and uh give an oral communication via the Zoom webinar.
Great, and as they raise their hand, um if if they could uh introduce themselves by giving their name and and address for the record, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Revel, you can start if you'd like.
Yes, uh good evening, Mayor Raisner. And Honorable Councilmembers, my name is Dennis Revel, President of Revel Communications. Uh I've had the honor of serving as TNT Fireworks Public Affairs spokesperson and representative since nineteen eighty-nine. I trust that each of you have had the opportunity to read and hopefully digest my email to you of July twenty twentieth of twenty twenty, when this issue was last heard by the City Council. Regrettably, because of COVID, Tulare Council of Cities has not had the opportunity to discuss this, the issue of illegal fireworks as this City Council, your city manager, and I had all hoped. They, after this this uh last discussion of this on before the City Council, I requested and was told that I would be granted the opportunity to participate in the Council of Cities discussion on behalf of our client and the hundred and ten nonprofits in the sixteen communities in Tulare County. Who every year depend on the sale of state-approved fireworks is their primary fundraiser. I recognize and applaud your desire to do something about the very serious and growing problem of illegal fireworks in your community. I, along with our client and the approximately twenty Porterville nonprofit organizations that TNT has the distinct honor of working with each year, share that desire with you. In twenty twenty, no community was immune from these insane illegal aerial displays and explosions. But as the TV news videos I provided you last July clearly demonstrate, it was particularly rampant and severe in communities where no fireworks were allowed. Regrettably, until recently, nothing was being done to stop the influx of these illegal dangerous items into California and and into local jurisdictions like Porterville. As a result, cities throughout the state have become not only the first line of defense, they have become the only line of defense against illegal fireworks. While Porterville was one of the first cities to adopt an administrative fine procedure for the possession and use of illegal fireworks, there are still several other illegal fireworks enforcement options recommended by the League of California Cities, which it has at its disposal. Most notably are the Fireworks Social Host Ordinance and the Cost Recovery Recovery Ordinance Options. I respectfully urge you to give these options your most serious consideration. Thousands of cities and counties across the state are successfully using them to combat illegal fireworks. Also, I would encourage you to join Senator Bob Archuleta and his legislative effort in Sacramento to free up several millions of dollars to embolden the state's enforcement efforts to keep these illegal fireworks from ever making their way into California in the first place. My office, our client, and our client, and the nonprofit groups are here to work with you, city staff, police and fire personnel, to help your community. Thank you, and I would welcome any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Revel. Is there anyone else?
Your Honor, I believe that was the only attendee that raised their hand for the oral communication portion of this uh segment.
Okay, ha- have there been any electronic communications?
Yes, there have been, Your Honor, there's uh quite a few. Uh I will be timing all of these um correspondence uh the three minutes as they are pretty lengthy.
Please proceed.
Uh the first one is from Steve Walker. Uh City Council members, I am writing. I apologize, give me one more. City Council members, I am writing today in regards to the Schedule Matter Twelve, the use and sale of legal state-approved safe and sane fireworks within the city of Porterville. As an organization, our ministry and local ministry around and around the world missions have benefited from being able to participate in the sale of legal safe and sane fireworks. While not being able to sell fireworks would certainly affect the level of our ability to minister to not only to our community, but to others that we support as well. This potential loss of resources is certainly a a consideration, whether the sale of fireworks should continue or not. But it's is only a minor portion, for we will continue as best we can either way. There is definitely a problem with legal fireworks in our city and has been for years. Even before the sale of safe and sane fireworks was approved, the issue is how to best address the use of illegal fireworks. Banning the sale of legal safe and sane fireworks to deal with those that choose to possess and use illegal fireworks is focusing on the wrong segment of our population. Illegal fireworks have been used, especially this past year, for weeks before the sale of the legal safe and sane fireworks began. Banning the sale of the legal safe and sane fireworks may very well increase the use of illegal fireworks. In our society and constitution, there are provisions that address illegal activity and the consequences that go along with the activity. To address illegal activity by taking away legal activity is counter to we stand for as a nation. We know that there are people that when they drive, they don't follow the laws already in place, and they may not stop for red lights or stop signs, drive faster than the speed li- limit, drive on the wrong side of the road, and a myriad of other violations. Each of those violations is addressed by enforcement and consequences for those committing the violations. Does every violator get caught? We know that doesn't happen, but to address those violating driving laws by making all driving illegal makes no sense. Logic calls for the issue of illegal fireworks to be addressed in similar manners, focusing on those committing the violations, not those following the law by using, possessing, and selling legal safe and sane fireworks. Some of the possibilities to enforce the consequences of the use of illegal fireworks could include increased enforcement patrols that reach beyond the night of July fourth, a social host ordinance that addresses the issue of illegal fireworks and placing responsibility for the possession and use of illegal fireworks, not only on the person found to be using or possessing them, but on the property owner or host where the illegal activity takes place. There are other communities that have adopted this type of ordinance that can be used as a template. The use of social media and apps such as Nail'em that allows the public to quickly and accurately inform law enforcement of the ish of the use and lo- location of legal fireworks being used. The MyPorterville app. The, Your Honor, the three minutes have expired for that portion of the um comment.
Okay, thank you, and we can move on to the next comment.
The next one is from Jacob Dobbs, twenty ninety-two West Morton Avenue. It has come to my attention that tonight the Porterville City Council will be deciding rather or not to discontinue the sale and use of safe and sane fireworks within Porterville city limits. This topic on the agenda interests me because I currently serve as the Youth Director at New Life Church here in Porterville. Last summer, my youth ministry alone was able to put over one thousand seven hundred dollars in our account for ministry purposes for the year. That's one week of fundraising and an entire year of funding for my ministry. That one thousand seven hundred comes after we fully funded our youth summer camp, approximately five thousand dollars with fireworks profit. And our children's ministry also received approximately one thousand seven hundred dollars. I was present at the first City Council meeting where this was on the agenda last year and heard multiple members of the council question how much profit is made from these booths. I can only hope that these numbers will help everyone to understand just how beneficial the fundraiser is and just how much revenue it brings in. At the initial council meeting, I also heard it suggested that youth organizations like mine could rent a booth at Freedom Fest in order to fundraise. The most obvious problem with that is that last year, there simply wasn't a Freedom Fest. There's no guarantee there that there will always be one, and selling hot dogs or true roads at an event for an evening simply will not.
Did we lose you?
I apologize, my microphone is seems to be having some technical difficulties.
I think you left off at at the churros.
Yeah. Hot dogs or churros at the event for an evening simply will not bring in the same revenue that the fireworks booth has. It was mentioned in the initial City Council meeting that not every organization that applies for a booth will get one. I believe that referring to a lottery that takes place where all applicants are written down and a lottery is taken to see who will be able to have the booth that year. I heard it said in the last City Council meeting by the current fire chief that the number of applicants in twenty twenty far exceeded the number of booths. There were twenty-one organizations that applied for fireworks booths and fourteen organizations had one. That's not everybody having one, but it's not like it was ten years ago when there were forty applicants and only ten booths available. This fireworks booth is the largest fundraiser we have all year. It pays for a large sum of our summer camp, and without it, many middle school and high school-age students will simply not be able to afford to attend our camp. Our camp offers not only something positive for our community, young people, but it's a place where many experience positive life change. It has been mentioned that the use, Your Honor, the three minutes have expired for that one.
Thank you, you can move on to the next comment.
The next uh the next oral communication is from Keith Kiziar. Ladies and gentlemen, we are here discussing the ban of selling and using safe and sane fireworks in the port in Porterville. Of selling and using safe and sane fireworks in the port in Porterville. We visited this proposal last year and thought we had come to an answer, or did the question just kick get kicked down the road? State-approved safe and sane fireworks are not the problem. They are restricted in their noise level, their flash level, and their power so as to help prevent injury. Illegal fireworks are the problem and the safe and sane fireworks are the best deterrent against the use of illegal fireworks. L.A. County has outlawed all fireworks and yet the use of illegal fireworks has exploded over the years. A simple internet search will show videos of multitudes of illegal fireworks over L.A. City last July, even though all fireworks were banned. If you ban all fireworks, even the state of California approves safe and sane fireworks, you will still have the problem, maybe worse, but none of the revenue. There are other avenues to approach this issue as detailed by the folks at TNT Fireworks. Changes in ordinances to include social host liabilities and Nailim programs have proven effective in other towns and cities. My church has been involved in the sale of fireworks. Here in Porterville for the for six of the last seven years. We have not only found the income very useful, especially last year, but we have found it a great. Time of fellowship as well. When our members gather together outside of normal times and places to promote a better understanding of each other. I would ask the council to not ban the sale and use of safe and sane fireworks in Porterville. I would also like to ask the council, are we going to visit this issue two or three times a year from now on? Are we going to continue to discuss this over and over until the council gets tired of it and bans fireworks anyways? You are never going to please anybody, but as long as it's safe and sane, why not continue to do your best for the majority? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next city.
Please.
The next one is from Pastor Peter Shalemir of Porterville First Assembly of God. Dear City Council, I understand the frustration that all of you may have with illegal fireworks. However, I strongly urge you to not cancel the sale of safe fireworks. Here are some reasons as a pastor. It makes absolutely no sense to punish law-abiding citizens for behavior of people who do not abide by the law. Do we make Porterville a car-free zone because some people go with the speed limit and even drive dangerous? No. Churches and nonprofits need the resources, especially during these hard times. I know that only fourteen organizations are selected, but each of these organizations are able to do things they otherwise would not be able to do in our community. With the money they raise from the fireworks sales. Even when our church is not selected by the draw, we benefit from other nonprofits being picked as they are. Then able to help in ways we can't that calendar year. Here are some things that profit of fireworks are used for which help our city. Sports programs, feeding the homeless, children's activities, art programs, summer camp, youth juvenile prevention programs and more. All these programs are either directly or indirectly connected to the sale of fireworks. Nonprofits do not pocket the money to get rich, but to bless our city in many ways. In my view, canceling the fireworks sales in our city only punishes the law-abiding citizen who are celebrating the Fourth of July. Punishes the nonprofits and punishes the people who helped during the year, which they often get from these nonprofits. Here is a great suggestion from TNT Fireworks that we fully support. We would respectfully suggest that the city council consider amending their ordinance to do the following to combat illegal fireworks in the use in the city of Porterville. One, utilizing language similar to other jurisdictions ordinances by adding a social host liability and penalty section in the ordinance. Which holds property owners liable and sizable for the use of illegal fireworks on their properties, thus making enforcement against illegal fireworks much. Easier on fire and police. Two, hold parents and juveniles jointly liable for their use and possession of illegal fireworks as well as social host liability. Three, fully participate in the free Nailim smartphone app program for reporting illegal fireworks use and have the maximum. Number of police officers, fire personnel, and code enforcement officers on duty during the evening hours over the period of June twenty-eighth through July fourth. To receive Nailim field reports when Porterville residents file them. Thank you for your time and your service to our city. Sincerely, Pastor Peter Shalemir.
Thank you.
Our next one is from Dallin Christensen. Dear City Council, I would be amiss. Not to provide my voice and opinion again regarding your consideration to ban all fireworks in the Porterville. I have read and followed articles, comments, complaints addressed to the city council regarding fireworks. The vast majority of them have nothing to do with the safe and sane fireworks that nonprofit organizations sell as fundraisers for their organizations. The complaints are in relation to illegal fireworks that are brought in from elsewhere that cause the loud booms that frighten pets and vets. My family has participated every year in celebrating the Fourth of July with fireworks ever since Porterville legalized them. We have observed the law by only setting of the safe and sane fireworks. It is a family fun activity my kids look forward to every year. We have even set off these fireworks with our pets by our side and have not had any problems. The safe and sane fireworks may have some snaps and crackles, none have any booms. I am a citizen of Porterville and also a member of the Optimist Club of Porterville. Our organization supports the community by co-sponsoring the Porterville Celebrates Reading Event, a Boy Scout Pack. Multiple youth sports groups, student scholarships, and other and other events. The funds from the fireworks sales help us be able to give back to our community. We have been selling safe and sane fireworks for many years and do not support illegal use of sale of loud or aerial fireworks. As you probably know, the safe and sane fireworks sold in California are examined by the California State Fire Marshal and determined to. Come within the definition of safe and sane. Any fireworks not meeting the definition of safe and sane are subject to a city administrative citation which includes a fine. I wholeheartedly support finding people, groups, and gatherings. That are using illegal fireworks not deemed to be safe and sane. As has been considered by the council, I exhort you to consider possibly amending and or utilizing the city fireworks ordinance too. One, utilize language similar to other jurisdiction ordinances by inserting a social host liability and penalty section in the ordinance. Two, hold parents and juveniles jointly and severably liable for their use and possession of illegal fireworks as well as social host liability. And three, participate fully in free Nailim smartphone app program. And have the maximum number of police officers, fire personnel, code enforcement. During the evening hours over the period of June twenty-eighth through July fourth to receive Nailim field reports when Porterville residents file them. As I recall, the outright ban of fireworks has not affected other areas such as Los Angeles. It will not eliminate the firework problem here either. In fact, it is likely to make the illegal fireworks more of a problem as there would not be an alternative safe and sane option available in Porterville. I have sent the attached informative pamphlets to you in the past and include them once again. These pamphlets explain these issues in more detail and have reports from other cities that have previously banned fireworks before. And that is the three minutes allotted time for that.
Thank you, and as well if if there's more comments and you see that they are. Repeat or cut and paste versions of previous comments, you may feel free to let us know that and move on to other comments.
Yes, Your Honor. The next one is from George Fernandez. To whom it may concern, is absolutely necessary for the city of Porterville to continue allowing the sale. Of safe and sane fireworks within the city limits of Porterville. Fireworks booths provide illegal means for families to celebrate our Independence Day. The products sold at these booths provide a legal and safe form of entertainment for the community. The fireworks booths provide much-needed revenue for nonprofits which have been greatly hampered by the pandemic. Virtually all forms of traditional fundraisers have been canceled and. The few that are allowed must be held outdoors. These firework booths provide an excellent COVID-nineteen safe fundraiser. Our community cannot afford not to have these fireworks booths. Please continue our annual Fourth of July tradition. Of buying meat to barbecue Gisler Farm, sweet corn, and fireworks for our family. Respectfully submitted, George B. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Our next one is from Pastor David White. Your Honor, this is pretty much gonna coincide with a lot of the previous. Previous discussions in regards to not banning the sale of safe and sane fireworks.
Okay, and if the closing is any different, you may feel free to read the closing. If it is the same, then I think we've. Come to understand.
We can, I'll go ahead and start towards the middle. There are not enough bake sales and car washes to come close to matching that kind of fundraiser. With the COVID shutdowns and restrictions of the past year, our in-house giving has been impacted in every way. Our families are suffering in this economics. Downturn in terrible ways. If you have to take away the opportunity to sell fireworks, you are choosing to cripple finances. Of nonprofit organizations in our city. It funds our youth programs, our homeless ministry, our small group ministries. To needy families. The impact of taking this fundraiser away will have a ripple effect on our city of tsunami productions proportions. I apologize. Cities throughout the San Joaquin Valley have long found ways to allow the sale of fireworks while maintaining a safe environment. As its people celebrated their freedom. Please do not take away the financial freedom that comes through these fireworks. The easy path is just to eliminate fireworks altogether because of the one percent of the one percent of illegal fireworks. The right path is not make this an either-or proposition. Cities all over America find a way to do both. That was from Pastor David White.
Okay. Thank you for those comments, and if there's more, you can.
There are several more, Your Honor. I'm gonna go ahead and look towards the. To the Zoom, just to see if anyone else has tried to chime in with the hand raised.
And I guess this would be a great time as we know that there's some electronic communications. If you're listening on YouTube. You you can, if you do a search for city of Porterville, or you can go directly to. W W W dot C I dot Porterville dot C A dot U S. And right under special notice, you'll find instructions on how to go ahead and speak to us live through the Zoom webinar. And clerk, thank you. You can go ahead and proceed if there's more electronic communications.
Your Honor, are all the electronic communications in favor of? Are there any that are against?
Appreciate the question, and if the clerk wants to go ahead and and answer that, that would be appreciated.
Favor of, you know, just just get a count. And if that's legal, and how many are in favor, and I, you know, and see how many we have that are against.
Yeah, that absolutely works. You can even cite the name, just note the names if there's anybody else that's left that they weren't read out, but that they're. Whether they have submitted a letter, you know, supporting safe and sane and social host ordinance, which is what we've kind of heard the theme of. The other communications to be, or if they're, or if they have something different to say to note that.
Your Honor, the next few are actually in regards to different. Two, a few of them are opposed and. One for the cannabis item that we have. I can go ahead and read those, the rest of them.
Yeah, those will need to be read then.
Yes, please proceed.
The next oral communication we have is from John Coffey. Council, as veterans and pet owners, we are asking you to vote to terminate the sale and use of fireworks in Porterville, item twelve on tonight's agenda. However, considering this is already February, we ask that you put a short timeline of effect for this. Porterville has a history of leadership in Salt Lake County. And it is time for us to show renewed leadership by directing the prohibition of all fireworks within the city limits. With the exception of a city-sponsored public display. I know some organizations will say this is their important fundraiser of the year. I have lived in Porterville for more than sixty-five years and know that these very same groups survived before they could sell fireworks. In our opinion, it is past time for them to move on and find ways to fundraise without scaring veterans and pets. Thank you, John Coffey and Brock Neely. The next one is from Edith Levon. I am still subjected to fireworks, both motors and other types. The last time they were heard was two weeks ago. I want fireworks banned in city limits. I understand that nonprofits are using the sale of safe and sane fireworks as fundraisers. I have even worked in a booth, even though I am opposed to their use. There are other ways to raise fund. Nonprofits have been around longer than fireworks sales and have been legal in the city limits. Why can't the city have these nonprofits sell admission tickets to the Freedom Fest? Or maybe parking passes to the fest, or set up booths to sell whatever. There has to, there has to something else they can do. Fireworks start being set off around the beginning of June and maybe at the by the end of August first and also around New Year's. This year has been different. They wake me up at odd times late in the night. They scare my dogs and the motors shake my windows. I live in the center of town. Enough is enough. I have watched some of my neighbors come running out of their home when motors go off in the day. Please, please do something now. The next one is from Tim Johnson and. This one is a lengthy one and has is not similar to the others as well. I will go ahead and make sure that. The timer is set. This is from Tim Johnson. Dear Porterville City Council. I am writing to you as a concerned father of two young children, especially as it relates to the stance you have taken regarding the playgrounds in our city parks. In a recent phone conversation to the Porterville City Parks and Leisure Services Office, I was told that the playgrounds and the parks remain closed at your discretion. And because of California guidelines regarding parks. However, I, as I communicated to the lady on the phone that I spoke with, it is not accurate to say California's guidelines do not allow for. Playground and parks to be open. Rather, both the California COVID-nineteen website, updated as of December third, two thousand and twenty, and the California Department of Public Health website. Updated as of November twentieth, two thousand and twenty, both state that outdoor playgrounds are allowed to be open in all color tiers. And provide guidance for the safe operation of such spaces. Even further, there have been many reputable experts such as Dr. Jeffrey Klosner, who is a professor. Professor of Medicine and Public Health at UCLA and former medical officer for the Centers of Disease Prevention and Control. Who have deemed that playgrounds are essential for child development. In one article, Dr. Klosner states it is it this way. Decades of research show scrambling up the jungle gym of swinging on the monkey bars is much more than child's play. For kids, playgrounds both boost mental and physical health, sharpen problem-solving and coping skills, and even ease the effects of trauma. Presumably, based on such research, back in early December, Governor Gavin Newsom deemed playgrounds playgrounds essential for our kids. As I have had the opportunity to frequent other cities and towns in the Central Valley, both larger and smaller than Porterville since early December. I have noticed that they have had their playgrounds and their parks open, using the guidance provided by the state of California. Perhaps the organizational structure of Porterville Parks and Leisure Services is different than these other cities. But I am confident that if Donnie Moore, if Mr. Donnie Moore was given the opportunity, he and his team could figure out a way to safely open our essential playgrounds. For the benefit of the kids in our community. I have been waiting patiently for the Porterville to take such action since early December. However, since seemingly no action has been taken in that regard, I am writing to you to kindly ask that you do the right. By the youngest residents of our city and open the playgrounds in our parks. They are essential to the children in our community. Thank you for your consideration consideration, Tim Johnson. And we have one last. Comment for the evening, or at least for this segment. Dear Mayor, I'm sorry, this is from Joe Velazquez. Dear Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing us, Haven, to address you this evening regarding calendar item. Number twelve. My name is Joe Velazquez and I am writing on behalf of Hussein Rayani and Haven. I want to thank you all for the dedication and work you have done to bring safe access cannabis to the city of Porterville. As you are aware, Haven is one of the two approved retail cannabis dispensaries you have selected to open for business in your initial merit-based process. I would first like to voice our opinion on the proposed amendment for having a wholly locally-owned dispensary. I would like to point out that Haven Number Seven LLC is a hundred percent owned by local Hussein Rayani. He has lived in the city of Porterville for thirty-four years. If it is the city's intention to have a wholly locally-owned dispensary, you have already selected an applicant. Hussein Rayani and Haven Number Seven LLC who meets that criteria. I fully understand the logistical hurdles and difficulties that working remotely has caused for city staff. Council had directed staff to begin negotiations with Haven at its November third, two thousand and twenty city council meeting. Unfortunately, we are no further along in the process than that date. I have had multiple email exchanges with promises of contact to begin our development agreement with no luck. Mr. Rayani has also been down to the city a couple of times with him being told somebody will call him back. At this time, Mr. Rayani and I have exhausted all of our options. We are now in February. It has been three months since the council has selected. Retail applicants to begin the CUP and Development Agreement process, and I am asking council to please direct staff to expedite and resume our process. So we can start generating tax revenue. Adding an additional store at this time would simply lead to more delays for the two applicants currently going through the licensing process. Which in turn would only delay the economic and tax benefits for the Porterville community that an operational license dispensary brings. Thank you for your time, Joe Velazquez. Your Honor, that is the conclusion of all the email correspondence that we received for this segment of oral communications.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank you for reading those and thank you to all those who who spoke live and submitted comments. And it's greatly appreciated, and I know this is a new, kind of a new. And, um, I know this is a new, a kind of a new setup that we have, but I appreciate everybody, uh, going along with, um, us trying to conduct the meeting as, as, uh, efficiently and professionally as we can. Uh, with that, yes.
If I may, if I may, Your Honor, just to clarify, because I know the city attorney had mentioned this, uh, uh, Fernando, was there, uh, uh, the city clerk, was there other, was there other comments that you didn't read? Uh, because I think she wanted to, to have made mention of those comments by name.
Uh, you know what, actually going through, um, when we did bring up that, that mentioning, that was at the last comment that we had received for the, uh, so, so everybody that was, that was, that was, uh, wanting to talk, uh, got their chance. All, all the comments have been read.
Okay, so there, there's no written communications you've received that you haven't, you haven't mentioned their name?
At least three minutes got read.
Yeah.
That's all, I just remember saying there were. Okay, just wanted to confirm.
And thank you for clarifying that, um, as you all know, we'll have another period at the, toward the end of the meeting that, uh, there may be some more comments. But, um, now we can move into the AB 1234 reports that are required by government code. Um, so all the reports, all the meetings that have been attended will be reported on. It looks like we've got twelve of those reports, uh, starting with number one, the Tulare County Task Force on Homelessness from January twentieth, twenty twenty-one. And I think, um, that's, uh, Claudia Calderon will be presenting.
Thank you, Your Honor, um, and council. Um, as mentioned, I attended, um, as alternate to Vice Mayor Flores, uh, Tulare County Task Force on Homeless, on homelessness of Jan, January twentieth, twenty twenty-one. So the first item on the agenda was the, um, minutes for the November eighteenth, twenty twenty meeting, and those were approved. Then they went on to, uh, provide and discuss updates to the project room key and the housing of unsheltered Tulare County residents in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, the report was provided by Mr. Felix and an update to the rehabilit, that, excuse me, an update that the rehabilitation continues at the, uh, PSH sites and that there were seventy-one units that were occupied, and there was an additional thirty at the lamp, Lamp lighter Inn for COVID-only residents. They also have, since the beginning of the, um, of the project, an average of forty COVID-positive cases at any given time, and that's about since April. Uh, the next item was it to receive a presentation by Ryan Reiners about the Tulare County Hope Navigation Center, and Ms. Reiners provided an update that a nonprofit organization has been formed by the name of Tulare County Hope for the homeless, and they will be responsible for capital campaign and fundraising, and additionally, they will be seeking federal, state, and local funding like PLHA and CDBG for operational costs, which they estimate will be nine hundred thousand annually, and two to two and a half million for construction of the site. And that site is a project that will be a one-hundred-bed shelter with family, men, women, uh, dorms that will operate as a housing-first, low-barrier shelter. They will be providing onsite services, case management, and hope to provide job training for the meals in a commercial kitchen setting that they plan to include as part of this campus. They are currently working on securing a law, securing a law in Visalia that is zoned appropriately. They didn't disclose the location as they're, um, still in negotiations and figuring out if that's gonna work out. Uh, the next item was to receive a presentation by Donna Ortiz and Natalie Bolin from the Tulare County Mental Health and Alcohol Drug Programs. And Ms. Ortiz and Ms. Bolin provided an overview of their PSH facilities and explained that, uh, the level of care for each one, um, of those, uh, projects and including a sixteen-bed facility in Porterville. They provided, um, that information that they will be providing whole-person care, um, and are moving towards a multidisciplinary case management system, and total, they have housed five hundred and forty-two individuals. The next item was to receive an update by Reverend Susie Ward on the Winter Warming Center located in Visalia, and Reverend Ward indicated that they received a grant and have leased twenty-three rooms for sixty days with an option of seven more rooms. Um, and then they currently have housed twenty-three adults and one child. The target population is the fifty-five and over age group, however, this child is accompanied by two adults and one of which is fifty-five years of age or older. Um, they also have, um, they're in the process of approving and providing meals on wheels for the project, as most other residents are sixty and over, and currently they have additionally secured a hot meal for five days and gift cards to provide prepackaged and prepared food and snacks for the other meals. They're also, um, providing quarters for laundry. They're coordinating with, uh, the King's Tulare Homeless Alliance for Housing Navigation and hope to connect most to other housing options or services after the sixty days, uh, which conclude on March twelfth, twenty twenty-one. The nonprofit Visalia's Homeless Center, um, in Visalia is accepting donations at the, uh, church that Reverend, uh, Susie Ward, um, has on one-twenty North Hall Street, and that money and donation is being substituted for laundry or other snacks and other needs that are not covered by the grants they have. They're also looking for a permanent location to open this warming center, um, in the winter and poss, possibly summer months for cooling centers. The next item on the agenda was to receive an update from all the cities Tulare, Visalia, and Porterville, uh, for their homeless efforts. The city provided, um, which Ms. Ketch aside provided, uh, you know, uh, a longer report, but, um, we provided a small report as of that date that, um, Turning Point provided to us, and at that date, they had served seven hundred and ninety unduplicated people with an average of seventy to eighty people going for services daily. They had served thirty-one in the emergency shelter and ten in the bridge housing, and despite the pandemic making it harder to come by housing, they had housed two people so far, which was reported earlier today. Staff also addressed a public comment similar to the public comments received at the January twentieth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting, inquiring of the task force if anyone had any more information about the encampment cleanup. Tulare County Sheriff's Office indicated that they were only aware of contacts with private property owners. The city of Tulare has placed an item on their agenda to discuss homelessness and the lighthouse, lighthouse rescue mission in Tulare has added fifteen beds. The city of Visalia did not provide a report as there was no representative available at that meeting to provide it. And, um, lastly, there is a public comment that was made by Maria Reese, the executive director for Central Valley Empowerment Alliance regarding a cleanup in Porterville, uh, in the Port of area and concerns of it taking place during the pandemic. Supervisor, Supervisor Shucklian directed Mr. Chaz Felix to follow up with Ms. Reese. And the next meeting is scheduled for February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, are there any comments or questions?
I do have a comment.
Yes, please proceed.
It's good to have our homeless lady back. Welcome back, Claudia.
Thank you.
It's a great report, thank you.
I have, I have a comment.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
And, and would like to, uh, kinda, I, first of all, I want to thank Claudia for being the alternate and being present to represent the city of Porterville as I was at another meeting. And with that being said, with the oral communications that were made at the Tulare County Task Force from the Central Valley, um, Empowerment Alliance, um, and the comments that were made at our last city council meeting with regarding to evictions and notices, I want to just make the comment and be as transparent with communications that I reached out and I called, uh, the sheriff, and I pretty much highlighted what was stated under oral, uh, the oral communications at our council meeting, and because I was not in attendance, I did listen to the video toward the end of the homeless task force with regards to the issues that were addressed. Um, I asked the sheriff if there had been any, uh, enforcement or any details, or if there had been any eviction notices that had been served, and in our conversation, what he did share with me is that, um, there had not been a detail in over a year, and to his knowledge that there hadn't been anything recently, he did say that Visalia had recently had their own detail, but that was city. And, uh, he talked about eviction notices, uh, highlighted the thirty-day noticing, and of course, if there were any, it would be for, you know, they would have to be concerned with storage. He said that is, that as of that date that we spoke, that there were no detail operations in Porterville. I continued the conversation because I had shared with him that I had listened to the video on the homeless task force under the public, public comment, and, um, Madi had made reference to housing, and she made reference to Martin Luther King, um, January the eighteenth, that there were evacuation notices, evacuation notices that were given to the homeless along the Tulley River, and that they were citing a nuisance, and that she had reached out to Councilmember Penyloza and had met with him, and that according, uh, to the information she received, that there were no complaints on behalf of the city, and that the homeless were to be evacuated by the Monday. The, our meeting was Tuesday, and after the notice was served, that they would have been evacuated along the riverbank, and what she shared, that they were mostly elders, seniors with disabilities, and that they had lived there for a long time, and of course, the concern was with the pandemic, and that there had been a waiting list for room key, and that there wasn't one encampment for approximately fifty people. Uh, what was shared was that in Visalia, some of the belongings were burned, but that city originally, you know, to me, that was just a city-initiated detail. But in consultation, um, with the city of Porterville, that she had met with three different groups and two council members, that there was a housing crisis in the city of Porterville, and that the city was not prepared. And, uh, from what I had heard and was that if someone could reach out to the sheriff, well, I did, because it was a human rights violation, and Ms. Shucklian did state that it was an item that could not be discussed because it wasn't agendized, and she referred it to Mr. Reese. Um, and as we spoke, again, I had brought to the sheriff's attention what I had shared from the council meeting and the task force meeting, and he said, again, he reiterated that there were no details because of COVID, that everything had been pulled back, everything had been scaled back, and what he did, he followed through, he told me he was going to check with his staff, which he affirmed that there was nothing. What he did tell me was that he was going to check with the station commander in Porterville and get back to me. He did call me back, and what he said was that, uh, he stated that the information he was given was not for a sweeping detail, but private property. There were two private property owners that complained. There were two notices that were given, and that was at the beginning of December, and it was not a river detail, it was not a sweep, it was private property, and it was a citizen complaint, and that the property owners had signed the complaint of trespassing, and that it was a complaint by the owner. And one of the things in the conversation that, uh, I had with the sheriff, he was very open to the communication, because he said that he also had a team to work with the homeless and that they were there to serve the homeless, and he encourages people, anyone that has a, that would like to speak with the sheriff department to the process and to any of the evictions, to feel free to call the station commander here in Porterville. I just wanted to share that information, because we had had the oral communication at our council meeting, and this was brought up at the homeless task force, that I did reach out to him, and that was the information that I had gotten.
Okay, thank you for bringing the additional detail to light and, uh, seeking clarification with the good sheriff. Uh, are there any more questions on this report? Okay, um, seeing now we can move on to the next report, which is the Local Agency Formation Commission, otherwise known as LAFCO, from January twentieth of this year.
Thank you, Mayor, and please be patient with me, because this meeting was very lengthy. We had approximately, I want to say, seven public hearings, and we met on January the twentieth via Zoom or teleconference. We had the approval of the December second minutes, and there were no public comments, uh, before we started. Several of the public hearings were combined with, with the related cases. The first, uh, I want to say the first two, I'm going to reference them by number. The formation of the DuCor Water District and the dissolution of the DuCor Irrigation District, which is case number fifteen fifty-one A. It, uh, the DuCor Irrigation District, that, I apologize, the DuCor Irrigation submitted a request for the dissolution of the DuCor Irrigation District in conjunction with a landowner petition for the formation of the DuCor Water District in its stead. The formation was for approximately ten thousand one hundred and eighty-one acres. The dissolution for the entirety of the irrigation district, which is approximately ten thousand four hundred and fifty-four acres. A notice of exemption was prepared in compliance with SEQA by the DuCor Irrigation District. The reorganization would dissolve the DuCor Irrigation District and would form the DuCor Water District in its place, subject to an election. A subsequent proposal, fifteen fifty-one B, which would establish a sphere of influence for the newly formed Water District. The public hearing opened, a Mr. Owen spoke in full support of the project. The public hearing was closed, and we immediately went into the sphere of influence for the DuCor Water District, case number fifteen fifty-one. The DuCor Irrigation District submitted a request for a sphere of influence for the DuCor Water District. The proposed sphere of influence for the DuCor Water District would follow the same boundary as the sphere of influence for the DuCor Irrigation District. A notice of exemption was prepared in compliance with SEQA by the DuCor Irrigation District. The sphere of influence is needed in conjunction with the reorganization in case fifteen fifty-one A. The proposed SOI for DuCor Water District would follow the same boundary as the SOI for the DuCor Water District contingent upon approval of the reorganization in fifteen fifty-one A and a successful election. The public hearing opened, no further comments, the public hearing closed. Recommendation was to take action individually. The first case fifteen fifty-one A, second case fifteen fifty-one B, both cases passed unanimously by the commissioners present. The next three public hearings were all related to Allensworth. The Sphere of Influence Amendment to the Allensworth Community Services District, case fifteen fifty-two A. The Allensworth Community Services District submitted a request for, of influence amendment of approximately five acres of land located northwest of the intersection of Road eighty and Avenue twenty-eight alignment. Notice of exemption was prepared in compliance with SEQA by the Allensworth Community District. The SOI amendment is needed to accommodate an annexation in case fifteen fifty-two B. The site is a historic cemetery and does not presently require a great portion of governmental services and controls. The intention of the SOI amendment and subsequent annexation and activation of latent cemetery powers is to place the historic cemetery in the Allensworth Community Services District, who would then improve, maintain, and operate the cemetery. Case fifteen fifty-three C requests the activation of latent cemetery powers. Case fifteen fifty-three C, request the activation of latent cemetery powers. The public hearing opened, there was a full virtual house of Allensworth Community Representatives who spoke in favor and in support of the amendment, including the superseding cases. Public hearing closed and went to the annexation for the Allensworth Community Services District and detachment from the Tulare Public Cemetery District, case fifteen fifty-two B. The Allensworth Community Services District submitted a request for an annexation of approximately five acres of land located northwest of the intersection of Road eighty and Avenue twenty-eight. The alignment and a detachment from the Public Cemetery District for all the area within its district boundaries, which is approximately eight hundred nine acres. A notice of exemption was prepared in compliance with SEQA by the Allensworth Community Services District. The reorganization would annex a cemetery site to the Allensworth Community Service District. The detachment from the Tulare Public Cemetery District would avoid the duplication of service providers within the Allensworth Community Service District boundary as a result of the subsequent, subsequent case fifteen fifty-two C, which would activate the latent cemetery maintenance powers for the Allensworth CSD. The public hearing opened, the comments continued. But as you listen to the comments and you heard that the passion of being detached from the county and to be able to form their own district so that they could take care of their cemetery was just something to hear with, to this regard. Going into the activation of latent cemetery maintenance powers of the Allensworth Community Service District, case fifteen fifty-two C, the Allensworth Community Service District submitted a request for an activation of latent cemetery maintenance powers. A notice of exemption had been prepared in compliance with SEQA by the Allensworth Community Services District. Community service districts are formed and government, and are formed and government pursuant to community service district law. They provided the government code six one triple zero at SEC. The CSDs are independent special districts governed by a board of trust, board of directors. The CSDs can provide a range of municipal services pursuant to the principal act. Any service or function that is authorized by the principal act but is not listed as one of the CSD's function, when the CSD is formed or subsequently approved by LAFCO, is considered a latent power. The public hearing opened, the comments continued, the public hearing closed. Action was taken individually, case fifteen fifty-two A, fifteen fifty-two B, and fifteen fifty-three C. The three cases passed unanimously by the commissioners present. Please bear with me, next was the city of Farmersville. The Sphere of Influence Amendment to the City of Farmersville, case fifteen fifty-three F twenty-seven A. The city of Farmersville submitted a request for a sphere of influence amendment of approximately five point seven acres of land southwest of a developed urban area of Farmersville adjacent to the existing Farmersville wastewater treatment plan. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared in compliance with SEQA by the city of Farmersville. The SOI is needed to accommodate a portion of the proposed annexation, case fifteen fifty-three F twenty-seven B. The SOI amendment and subsequent annexation are intended to add the site of the city's wastewater treatment plant to the city boundaries. The public hearing opened, Mr. Carl Schotler, the city planner, announced he was there if anyone had any questions. Mayor Paul Boyer from the city of Farmersville spoke in favor of the project hearing. Public hearing closed and went immediately into the annexation to the city of Farmersville and detachment from county service area number one, case fifteen fifty-three F twenty-seven B. The city of Farmersville submitted a request for an annexation of approximately thirteen point four acres of land located southwest of the developed urban area of Farmersville and adjacent to the existing Farmersville wastewater treatment plan. And two point four acres of land located along the Visalia Road right away. Two mitigated negative declarations have been prepared in compliance with SEQA and the city of Farmersville. Reference was made to area one, which contains the city of Farmersville wastewater treatment plan expansion and area two, which is a part of Visalia's road widening projects. Both sites are owned by the city of Farmersville, the public hearing closed. Action was taken individually, fifteen fifty-three F twenty-seven A, then fifteen fifty-three F twenty-seven B. The two cases passed unanimously by the commissioners present. The next one, and I'm almost through, is the item on the Alta Healthcare District Municipal Services Review Update. The Municipal Services Review Update was presented for consideration and adopted. The MSR and its determinations were posted for public review on November the tenth, two thousand twenty. After review, discussion of written determinations in area, questions were asked and addressed. The motion to approve the services review update was made. Motion passed unanimously by the commissioners present. Item of information I hand out was the LAFCO annual report legislative update. There was nothing to report for the moment. Uh, what they had received was copies of two letters were provided for the extraterritorial service agreements of the approval of two letters of approval and maps which were included in the board packet. ESAs for the city of Porterville to provide domestic water to two existing residences. And that concludes my report. The next meeting is for March the third. And I thank you for being patient as I reported out, there were just several items that they took action on at this meeting.
Great, and I, I don't, I don't think people can appreciate how many things happen at, at this meeting, so I appreciate giving us the rundown. Council, did you have any, any questions or comments before we move on to the next report?
Mayor, I do. Some comments, I just want to comment. I, I, I think I just want to thank the vice mayor for providing these, these reports that can seem long, but I, I, I do believe that this is what transparent government means to the people and it means knowing what's happening. What's happening at meetings that they're not present, so I know it may sometimes, you know, be long and extensive, but I think it's valuable. At least so it's on record, people can look back and hear these, these reports. And, and I really do appreciate the vice mayor, you know, putting these together to make sure that they, that we know what, what's happening.
Fantastic. So we'll move on to the next report, which I will give from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, the governing, governing board meeting that happened on January twenty-first. And of course, after the approval of the minutes and the, the regular housekeeping that happens, we were fortunate to welcome three new governing board members. Govern, supervisor Vito Casaya, or Kiesa, sorry, from Stanislas County. He joined the board as well as supervisor Robert Rickman from San Joaquin County. And from Tulare County, Amy Shucklian is also serving on our governing board, so uh, we, we had a, a moment to welcome them. Staff always leads off the meeting with a star recognition, which is service, teamwork, attitude and respect. And they, they reflect on the years of service that all regions of the air district participate in, so it's always good to see that and it's an uplifting moment to begin the meeting. Of course, following that, we've received and filed a comprehensive annual financial report and single audit report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth. As well, that there were a few more action items. The approval of the district's twenty twenty-one legislative platform, uh, very similar to last year's legislative platform. As most of us realize with, with budgets and legislative platforms, COVID's kind of put things on hold, so whereas the air district started out with a a lofty goal of, of, I think it was five billion dollars and several projects that it wanted to undertake. Um, that, that has been scaled back to a more realistic, but still very relevant and very similar legislative platform. So the, the one noteworthy aspect that, that changed was the mention of trying to mitigate greenhouse gases, which uh, in the past hasn't been as, as forthright of, of an issue. Once you, you look at the, the platform, it's mostly dealing with stationary sources, some mobile sources. But there was a, a note for a fair and balanced approach both with residents' health as well as industry and, and business in the mitigation of greenhouse gases. Um, and another item that was of, of, I think, extreme importance and, and interest was the approval and implementation of a school air filtration incentive program. That comes from AB six seventeen, which is requiring community level monitoring for air quality. This is noteworthy because it, it extends finances to improving the HVAC systems as well as any air filtration systems in schools. The, there's certain money available to those AB six seventeen communities, which are the hardest hit by the air quality issues. Uh, and so having committees and, and lots of local input already. Some, one of the ways they arrived to trying to mitigate some of the poor air issues was to help students in their classrooms with these HVAC improvements. It, it goes, it goes ahead to improve the HVAC systems, air filtration units just below the, the quality of what a clean room would be. Um, because going for, as far as that would be quite expensive, but it does allow one point five million dollars to be spent in the uh, improvement of the, some of the schools in South Central Fresno, as well as two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be used for shafters. So look, look for other communities to start getting involved in six seventeen because with incentives and thoughtfulness in the programs like that, um, you can see that as, as I, as I've seen even locally, sometimes those improvements are, are not made early on and sometimes that equipment is, um, is used year after year, but the improvement and, and definitely the level of improvement that this funding would do is somehow and put off, so look for, look for communities to take part in in becoming AB six seventeen communities and, and maybe applying for this funding. And also, the theme this year is, is making sure that people are able to stay afloat, businesses and, and community members, but the air district is, is taking that seriously with a, an authorization to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding for a socioeconomic analysis in the support of regulatory development. In short, this looks at the development of regulations that don't, um, with the best available retrofit technology and best available technology, don't price communities out of being able to pay, whether it's the improvements, the penalties or what have you, looks at what that true cost is to the the local economies that would be impacted by that regulation. And the rest was just consent calendar and governing board comments, so that would conclude my report for the air district. And it looks like the, unless there's any more, is, any questions anybody has. Okay. Um, the next report would be for the Tulare County Association of Governments Regional Transportation Plan and Public Participation Plan from January twenty-second. And that would be Vice Mayor.
I'll go ahead and start and if council member Correa would like to chime in afterwards, that's fine. Actually, it was a very small meeting, but it was a good and productive one. Mr. Ted Smalley, the TCAG Director, City Manager, Mr. Lawless, Councilmember Correa, and I met. Our meeting was informational only. Mr. Smalley had reached out to the city to communicate and to share information with us for future projects, grants, funding availabilities in conjunction with transportation and road projects that would be a benefit in collaboration with the Tulley River Tribe and some of the projects they, that they would be working with. As an outcome of that meeting and this conversation, the four of us are tentatively scheduled to meet on February the eleventh with Chairman Garfield, council members Priscilla Santos and Gary Santos. And if council member Correa would like to add anything to that.
So the only thing that I would like to add is our discussion with Mr. Smalley was just on the lines of how to engage the tribe in continuous and ongoing partnership and discussion and participation so that we could have a truly stronger partnership and discussion of tribes included. So yeah, I just tried to share some suggestions of, of how to keep that going. So I'm looking forward to the future meetings and not too much to add, it was a short, brief meeting, but I thought productive.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from other council members? Okay, then we can proceed to the uh, next report, which is the City Council Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee Meeting from the twenty-second of this month. Council member Penialosa.
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned, we met together, the mayor, myself, John, Jason, Ryan Howard, Ryan Howard, and Patrice as well as Julia, we met together to discuss, you know, the next steps for the cannabis criteria selection process. Uh, and we met, we had some conversation about, you know, whether to allow for the process to be opened up to new applicants? Or did we want to just consider the wholly local to be the, 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 the two applicants that we had remaining, which which were considered, which were part of the process originally, the TREDC and Bloom Farms. Uh, and so we made, we're making a recommendation today to the city council as a scheduled matter on the mayor's and myself's recommendation on that, which was to limit, limit it to those two candidates. Uh, in addition to that, we are, we made a decision, or recommendation, sorry, to basically, uh, you know, have to, um, have another interview process for the, not a new interview, but have an additional interview for the two applicants and, and so that we would not open it up to, to any other, anyone else. And they would be the ones that would be interviewed again, to have an opportunity. So right now, I think the biggest, you know, we're going to be approving today's recommendation and any, any feedback from the rest of council. Uh, and hopefully we can hash out the interview questions that we would want to consider, uh, whether it's the same ones or any additional ones that we would want to have. And so, um, yeah, I think we're going to be meeting sometime soon uh, to be able to, uh, take up the recommendations from today's discussion uh, and to, you know, begin finalizing this process for the third dispensary license that we're going to be thinking about opening it up, so. If the mayor has any additional comments to make, or I don't know, staff or John that, that I missed, yeah, you feel free to share.
Wait, and, and thank you, council member. And we, we have been also looking at ways to continue discussions with those that have already been selected and, and ironing out ways to continue those, those negotiations and move forward in the process. As we look into this additional, we, we don't want to forget those who have already been selected, so we continue to, to, to work on that and, and move that process forward. Are there any questions from, or, or comments from staff or questions from council members? No? Okay, so we'll move on to Tulare County Association of Governments meeting from January twenty-fifth. And that would be the Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. We met on Monday, January the twenty-fifth. It was a It was a virtual Zoom teleconference meeting. On the transportation consent calendar, the items of information were with regard to Senate Bill One, the competitive competitive programs update, the implementation status of federally funded projects, sustainable community strategy, regional transportation plan, roundtable appointments, an update on timing and funding implications of the federal state vehicles regulation, transportation action discussion items, the stat the status of state transportation improvement program allocations, and California Transportation Commission update. On the association consent calendar, the items of action were the approval of the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty TCAG Board Meeting Minutes and the minutes of the December tenth, two thousand twenty Technical Advisory Committee Meeting, the adoption of resolutions. The first one would be the approval of Amendment Number Eight to the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one overall work plan. And the second one is to allow TCAG staff to provide affordable housing, sustainable communities grant technical assistance to the San Joaquin Valley applicants. On the association action discussion items, the adoption of resolution, draft two thousand twenty two public participation plan. It was open for public hearing. Blanca Escobedo spoke in favor and support of the project plan. No other, no other public comments. The hearing was closed, and the motion to accept the plan was unanimously approved. The next one would be the adoption of another resolution, the draft two thousand twenty tribal public participation plan. It was open for public hearing. Chairman Garfield of the Tulie River Tribe briefly spoke to the comments in the plan, proactive and positive participation. The public hearing closed. The recommendation was to take no action and to bring the item back. Items of information with regard to the legislative update. Every year, TCAG has held one or more voice trips to Washington, DC. TCAG participates in legislative efforts and Valley Voice Trips. Right now, they are analyzing the legislative platform for opportunities and strategies to build state and federal partnerships and find solutions to our needs. There will be one virtual DC trip in February with the anticipation of an in person Washington DC trip later this year. In additional to the regional transit update, they reminded us that our Conflict of Interest Forum seven hundreds are due April the first. That concludes the report, and our next meeting is February the twenty second.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next report, which is the the City Council COVID Ad Hoc Committee Meeting from January twenty fifth. I'll go ahead and report out on this meeting. I'm I'm proud to say actually that, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Correa and staff, that this is a day that a lot of things changed, some regulations changed, and the stay at home order had changed. And so swift action from the committee to have an initial meeting to figure out where where we stood with the outdoor dining in in specific and some of the other things that had come up in previous meetings to move forward. So the the main content of this meeting being, I think something that we had called that had some immediacy, was to schedule another meeting, which would allow us to have a little bit more time to discuss the the standing of the the applicants that had already been approved and the status of those who were pending and how we would go about doing that. And as as the council may know, this was all done with the thought that the outdoor dining that the council had authorized would expire on the thirty first of January. So great thought and effort was put into how we might proceed, knowing that any recommendation we would come up with at this meeting or the subsequent meeting would be pending the approval of council on the extension of that. All all with the benefit of local businesses who had already gone through the efforts of applying for the outdoor permits and keeping their efforts in mind to to move forward the best we could with the the information that was rapidly changing. Some discussion, I think, was at, as I mentioned, some of the other things that would change or could potentially change that we would discuss at a future meeting, which I'll report out, which that will be just one more report away. Unless there's anything the staff wants to add to this report for the meeting on the twenty fifth. Okay, and so that'll be to be continued, but we'll go one more report before that, which is the Tulare County Regional Transit Agency on the twenty fifth. There's actually two meetings. There were, one was on the twenty fifth and one was on the twenty sixth. They were both committee meetings that were related to the Regional Transit Agency. The first was the policy meeting, which the these are, they're both pretty short meetings. And primarily, the policy meeting dealt with the recommendation for a draft. FT it's similar to the FDA FTA drug and alcohol policy. But being ahead of of where, well ahead of where we would be to to adopt this, it's great that the the committees are thinking ahead and and at the with with staff actually helping to guide us and and being leaders in this area. We recommended that we adopt this drug and alcohol policy, which is basically a zero tolerance policy that we'll recommend, knowing that there may be an appeal process as the contracts are signed with those who are driving. And and keeping in mind that the safety of the public, as well as those who are employed, is is critical to the operation of a regional transit agency and all the agencies involved. The following day, there was a finance committee meeting, which I was also in attendance. We then, we did go over the interim budget, which I had reported on previously. But we wanted to make sure there wasn't anything to add. And of course, with the pending recommendation for the drug and alcohol policy, there was some questions about the testing that would come about, the cost of the testing and where that money would come from. And at that time, it was discussed and and shared that the county has a has a program through TCAG. If I'm if I'm correct, I believe it's through TCAG and the county that would deal with that testing and the policies that would work through that. So there was really no change to the adopt or the potentially, I guess I'd say, the interim budget. And there was also a discussion about additional costs associated with Cal Start Services. So as we seek grants to fund this agency, we we came to the realization through the help of staff that some of the grants may may end up having an additional cost associated with the grant writing and some of the processes there. So we discussed some strategies on how we could approach the grant writers, as well as communicate to the rest of the board what these additional costs may may look like and contingency plans and and some figures on what we might expect them to to cost. So good conversations moving forward on on ways to fund and also operate at the Regional Transit Agency. And so that concludes my report for those two committees. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer. And seeing none, I'll go ahead and move on to the second COVID Ad Hoc Committee Report. And it was at this ad hoc committee that we went ahead and verified the applicants who engaged in outdoor dining in within the city. We also had some that prior to the the last shutdown were in process or had submitted inquiries or had information submitted or partial applications. It was at this point that we decided that those who were in operation could resume operation pending the council's approval of the extension of the outdoor dining that that we had previously authorized. And then the ad hoc committee took the steps to run through the applications that had been submitted, but yet not yet approved. Also, to look at how we might move forward with the addition, understanding that reopening of restaurants and the use of outdoor dining was not only needed and and desired by the restaurant restaurateurs, but also by the general public. So in a way to effectively expedite that process, we were able to go through as as completely as we could without the the approval of council, understanding that was pending to move forward with trying to do that. As well, some of the conversation did revolve around the use of parks facilities. There was, there have been questions on whether playgrounds could be utilized. We know that amenities in general, the the pavilions and the get the sources of gathering are are not part of that discussion. However, it was in this meeting, we did ask staff what what's the precautions and what activities they could do to assure the safety of the the playgrounds, knowing that that would be a council level approval. The the question revolved around the fact that the public had been engaging in the usage of these playgrounds and and dismantling barricades that had been put up in an attempt to seek some outdoor recreation activities. So that was part of the discussion on how to possibly mitigate the temporarily illegal activity of of interacting in these playgrounds while safe and conscientiously looking at ways that we could attempt to reinvigorate those those areas that were sought after as as recreation for our youth. And so I'm sure we'll talk more about that as the as the item comes up. But unless I'm mistaken, and staff correct me if there was anything I missed in that second meeting.
That was good summary.
And that brings us to our next report, which is the California League of Cities Homeless Roundtable on the twenty seventh of January. And that would be the Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Earlier, you heard me preface mental health. And it is it is an important aspect of working with the individuals who are experiencing homelessness. The purpose of the Continued Roundtable was for cities to address homelessness in the midst of the pandemic, the weather, and how surrounding large and small cities statewide were assisting those who were experiencing homeless in particulars to the ideas and to share, inviting the cities statewide to share. The emphasis on the discussion for this meeting was mental health. It was to share their ideas and their best practices on how to be effective in responding to mental health issues and the needs of those who are experiencing homelessness. It was a focus and an emphasis which with how is our city addressing the needs to successfully provide or connect people with the much needed services? How is the city working with nonprofits to overcome mental health challenges? What additional or innovative steps your city is taking to support the population in the future? The forum had been open to all who wish to share, discuss, give scenarios, et cetera. What I heard from many participants were chronic homeless, those who were struggling in the streets. We don't have what we need. We don't have adequate mental health. We don't have the resources, such as from county to city. Students in school in an area close to Santa Clara, they described that many students are on free lunches. Among those students, the families are homeless or are doubling in living or other, living or with other families. The concern was expressed with suicide at a younger age, middle school, which is an effect on homelessness. Another city, I want to say, they said it was near the Sacramento area, had developed a navigator program and figuring out what services need to be provided, the additional housing and the temporary housing. So far, it's successful, but the concern is how to deal with those who don't want the services, who don't want the housing, whether it's temporary or otherwise. Even if they are provided, they have resistance, that the resistance is there. Someone from the area close to Riverside stated that, yes, they have to the health challenges that they have to find a way to segment services. They have a homeless team inclusive of code enforcement, law enforcement, nonprofits, and behavioral health. There is significant progress to help them to try to get the help. There is a lady, I always refer to her as Mrs. Price, because she, I believe, is a guru of homelessness or that she her, what she responds is just so resourceful. What she did was speak on the system side. She said that those who are able and those who are unable to navigate with mental health, you have to look at it in those components. And what she stated was that there are different levels of mental health. You have the mild, the moderate, where there are medical services that are provided. Then you go into the chronic severe. She said those mental health services are the counties who have the services and not the cities. She stressed how important it was for cities to work with the county. And went on just a little bit further to say that an outpatient really needs a bed for continued treatment, not an immediate release. In other words, if they go to the hospital for treatment, a scenario that for that person to continue, they need a crisis stabilization. Again, what she did was to put an emphasis on how important it was to partner with the county for mental health services. She stated sometimes it's a struggle for counties to listen. During the end of that conversation, there were two polling questions that were brought up. And the first one was whether we thought mental health was a priority. I really don't believe when the answer came up that everybody responded because it was a very weak yes and no on the chart. And when we went, when she went into, I mean, not her, but when the next polling question came up is, are we getting the support and the resources to address and assist? The response went off the chart with a no. I mean, it almost seemed that everybody responded that we weren't getting the support and the resources to address and assist. A lot more sharing and discussions continued with similarities to program stresses and the importance of collaborations to work with the agencies. I keep stating that these roundtables, that an hour is too short to listen. And again, as I heard what other cities were doing, whether they were large or small, again, it pleases me that the city has taken the supportive measures to address homelessness. And again, highlight and emphasis that we are the first city in this county with the navigation, the welcome center. I do know that city staff was there. They were present. I don't know if you were able to attend this one, Councilmember Pinalosa, like the last roundtable. Were you able to attend this one?
No, Vice Mayor, I wasn't in attendance, unfortunately.
Okay, I just thought I, if you were, if there was something you'd like to share, because that would conclude what I have to say.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
How often, Vice Mayor, are those roundtables?
The roundtables, they do, we get, because I'm on the Tulare County Task Force on homelessness and Councilmember Pinalosa is on the link for the the committees, there's on, we have been extended the invitation from from the League of Cities. I'm certain that would be open to you if you would like participation. It's an email that is It's an email that is sent to us. And when we get that information, we could certainly forward. And I didn't hear them at the conclusion of this one, that they would have another one soon. But it would be more, you're more than welcome. I would be more than happy to provide you with the information or Mr. Lawless can when we receive it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and what I would say, the League of California Cities is hosting a number of roundtables, which you should be receiving those notices. If you're not receiving the league notices, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. And the next report is for the Tulare River Tribal Council swearing in ceremony. I believe Vice Mayor Flores and Councilmember Carrillo were there. So Vice Mayor, if you want to go ahead, and by there, I mean virtually, so.
Thank you very much. Yes, I was there and it was an honor to virtually watch and witness the Tulare River Tribal Council being sworn in on January the 27th. I was able to congratulate the newly elected, those who were returning, and to those that remain that were not up for reelection. I look forward to working with the Tribal Council on various projects, the participations, the collaborations, and the partnerships. Again, I would like to thank Tribal Chairman Garfield for the invitation. And once again, I would like to say congratulations to each and everyone as we continue to move forward toward resiliency.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Carrillo, did you want to add anything?
I'll just add that I was pleased to get a late invite, but I was still able to, fortunately, we were finished up with our COVID-19 ad hoc that morning. So I happened to be available and was able to join. And it was really nice, they had an elder do a prayer and a blessing for the new council members to be well and healthy and productive. And Judge Wiseman of the Tribal Court actually did the swearing in. So that was really nice to see and there was some community, you know, but we couldn't have, they couldn't have a full room there. But for, for a lot of us, we were on virtually, signed on. And so I'm really happy that I was there and that the Vice Mayor was there as well. And we both shared some words.
Yes, and it's greatly appreciated to participate. And I did want to disclose that I did attempt to log on, although I had some technical difficulties. But being able to get on just at the tail end, I felt it appropriate to send a message directly to the chairman, stating that I was looking forward to working with the group in the future. So thank you for attending. And the final report is for the Kern Council of Governments Transit Electrification Presentation. That was on January 28th. I was in attendance in part of the presentation as well as Mr. Tree, who I see is also on the panel here and the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Flores was also in attendance, although the technical aspect of it wasn't, wasn't as kind to her as she deserves that day. As there were some technical difficulties. Her presence was visible and was felt, although she had to rely on Mr. Tree to do the verbal component of her presentation, which I don't know if you wanted to say anything, Vice Mayor?
I absolutely do. First of all, it was exciting, first of all, to have been invited by the Kern Council of Governments to profile the city of Porterville in the efforts in transit electrification. The portion of my presentation was to provide an introduction of Porterville, to speak about the city council's support of clean transportation and environment, such as supporting the city fleet, the school districts, the businesses, green power and zero NOx in particular, as well as the public charging and community. However, as prepared as I was or we, a big we, because and encompassed from the time I got on and was able on, I, there was just a problem with technicalities. I'm forever grateful to Mr. Knight for trying to walk me through some of this as I was getting bombarded with a lot of information as to what to do. Well, I had already done that. I was muted from the beginning. I was on the conference call. I got disconnected twice. I actually had access and then all of a sudden I got disconnected. But thank you to Mr. Rich Tree for taking the lead on the presentation, because I was able to listen not only to Mr. Tree's presentation, to most of yours before I was once again disconnected.
Yes, and thank you. And that was, it was unfortunate, but I think that everybody, everybody could see that you were ready, willing, and able to do it. And with great appreciation, Mr. Tree was able to add. And as well, it did a fine job in his presentation, in his portion of the presentation. I also was in attendance and spoke to the group in reference to some of the programs that the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District offers for clean vehicles. So a little bit about those programs and how they support clean vehicles, as well as what the future of Porterville and electrification and the whole system, what it looks like, and not just, not just limited to transit, but also about facilities and future planning as far as being a smart city and microgrids. Sharing that information, I think, and I hope was enlightening to those in attendance as I could see through the chat room. Staff with our transit agency was feverishly answering questions as they came up, as the information was so bold and important that we went right up to the very minute, if not a few minutes over the allotted time. So I was glad that staff was there to answer those questions. As well as there was a compelling video that was put together featuring our own Mr. Rich Tree. And I had seen that there was a possibility that we would have that tonight, but I'm not sure if we had that in, all queued up.
We can show that if the council would like, or we could schedule it as part of a future presentation, in the interest of time, whatever is.
Right, and I'll take the council with consensus if they'd like to see it. Also noting that we will be due for a short recess just to stretch our legs and maybe use appropriate facilities after. But Council, did you want to have the screening of the video at a later date? Or did you want to go ahead and view it?
Your Honor, I think it's probably best at a later date because we have people online waiting.
Okay. Very good. And the.
Time with these reports.
Yes, and it would be worth the wait to view it. And I think that with fresh eyes and maybe on the big screen, we can do it at one of the next meetings. So I was glad to see that. And at that point, unless there's anything that staff wants to add about that event, that concludes the reports. Again, 12 reports, kind of a lengthy portion and just not, not what usually happens, but lots of meetings happening right now. So any comments from staff?
It would just say, thank you for the mayor and vice mayor's participation in that. It was recognition by another county of what is happening in the world of transit electrification. And as we soon will be and are already started, our transport with electric vans, I think that presentation would fit well with that new program that is now enrolling in the city of Porterville.
Okay, great. And just by consensus of the council, do we want to go ahead and move through the staff informational report section before we take a brief recess? Or did we want to take it now? Any thought? Okay, we'll go ahead and.
We can go.
Okay, we'll keep it going with the staff informational reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a number of the quarterly reports that have been provided that are part of your customary schedule in providing at the council's direction with regards to a number of city activities. In addition to that, we've provided several other reports, some of them annually and some of them providing what has happened in your last couple of weeks that would a particular note. So happy to answer any questions with the number of staff reports that have been.
No question, but just happy to see, except for the circumstances in which it's happened, is the golf course doubling in its activities, knowing that it's one of the, one of the only things to do as well as the OHV park activity, looks like it's increasing. But thank you, staff, for the reports. And if, if I might, I'd like to have about a three-minute recess just to stretch my legs and use the facility down the hall.
Can we make it 10 minutes?
If you'd like 10 minutes, we can do 10 minutes.
Because it's 8:50 and we'll just come back after 10 minutes?
Is that, is that, Council, sound good? Okay, so we'll just go ahead and make it a 10-minute recess then. Okay. It's nine PM and we'll go ahead and reconvene from recess. I think we've got almost everybody back. Okay, and at this point, it looks like we're at the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will not be enacted or will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless the request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar. Further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. Counsel.
Mayor.
Yes.
If there are no items to be pulled and no conflicts, I make the motion that we approve the consent calendars, items one through 10.
There is one conflict, Mayor, number six. You're conflicted on that one.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay. That's all right. You can, we can, we can take your motion with the conflict. It's okay.
With the conflict, okay, let's do that.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Flores and a second by Councilmember Carrillo. No more discussion. End noting all, all the conflicts. We'll call for the roll or the voice vote or no roll call vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Pinaloza.
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Flores.
Aye.
Mayor Reyes.
Aye. Passes unanimously. And that brings us to our scheduled matters, the first of which is number 11, safe and sane fireworks.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are four scheduled matters before the council this evening. The first, as you, as you articulated, is the safe and sane fireworks. I'm going to invite Chief Lapierre to provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and Mr. Lawless. At the council's meeting on July 21st, 2020, the City Council considered and provided direction in regards to the continued sale of safe and sane fireworks to encourage interagency coordination with Tulare County, sorry, within Tulare County in the enforcement of illegal fireworks as well, the prospect of limitation on the sale of some illegal fireworks, sorry, legal fireworks. The intent of this report, the intent, sorry, the intent of this report is to consider the potential benefit of eliminating certain types of legal safe and sane fireworks from the list of fireworks allowed to be sold and used in the portable city limits such as other jurisdictions have done, such as Bakersfield. Specifically, there may be interest in eliminating those fireworks that cause a greater nuisance due to noise and those that are commonly manipulated to create more dangerous sorts of devices. Such as fireworks that shrill or eliminate loud noises and high-pitched sounds are known to have triggered effects for military veterans as well as animals. To work through this, we've reached out to other jurisdictions within Tulare County in a manner similar to how our local police departments have done, where they have put together task force and done blanket enforcement for the illegal fireworks. It's very difficult to nail down who's lighting off the legal fireworks when they're hiding amongst the safe and sane ones as well. That's pretty much the report. If you have any questions, I'm available for them at this time.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, did you have any questions that you wanted to ask?
I do, Your Honor.
Please.
Chief, how many citations did we hand out?
In the, in the last, in last Fourth of July, we sent out a personnel, two teams of four, and 29 sites were written within the jurisdiction.
Have we collected any, do you know?
Are you talking about the collection process of it? You know, it's very spotted with that. I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but the, the collection of those citations are very low.
Councilmember Carrillo, did you have any questions?
I don't right now.
Okay. And Councilmember Pinaloza?
No questions at the moment, Mayor.
And Vice Mayor?
Not right now.
Okay.
Mayor, may I add a couple more things?
Yes, please.
Well, they're at the Central Fire, Central, Central Valley Fire Prevention Officers Association. We've had several meetings with the fire marshals with the other jurisdictions establishing those task force and for the illegal fireworks. And there's, there is interest from the fire chiefs as well. I've had a conversation with Charlie Norman, which is our area ops chief, that has reached out to the state on, on at least one occasion and he's going to be reaching out shortly again to help, get some help with possibly controlling some of the illegal fireworks coming into the state of California. So we are reaching out as chiefs from our op area to try to get some relief from that.
What is the penalty for illegal fireworks?
It is $1,500 per firework, per, per citation. So $1,500 for a illegal firework and then we end up confiscating the fireworks as well.
Okay, so they don't have to go to jail or anything?
No, these are, these are administrative citations that are given. And now if we have like Piccolo Pete's, which is in the staff report, is one of the devices that can be modified to be actually felony and explosive device. And we've had that happen before where it's been, been modified and that takes place, then that is not a $1,500 fine. That's actually a felony crime that we pursue.
Does the DA, well, does the DA pursue that or you have to take it to federal?
That would go to the DA's office. We would involve PD at that point and I would have to say they would, I'm sure they would go after that and.
DA does support you on that kind of stuff?
I, I would think so. If someone's done explosive device. A lot of things changed after nine 11 when it comes to explosive devices. I don't know if you all remember where we had dry ice bombs in the local high school.
Right.
Where that, that was actually considered a common dioxide bomb and was actually a felony. Several people got prosecuted for that. So a lot of things changed when explosive devices after nine 11.
I do have a question that you can move out. By me?
Yes, please.
So Chief Lapierre, I know in the staff report, it's mentioned that, that other jurisdictions like the city of Bakersfield have eliminated certain, certain types of legal insane fireworks. When, do you, have you, do you know, have, have a, do you have an idea of what fireworks specifically, you know, eliminated? And it, it seems to be that they didn't eliminate everything. They just eliminated some that were really loud.
The ones that they, to my understanding, they eliminated was the, the, I'm going to use the term Piccolo Pete, which can be modified. Now, I've received some, some stuff from TNT where they're showing their Piccolo Pete had been redesigned so that it can't be modified in that manner, but not all fireworks come from TNT. There's different manufacturers that are sold within our jurisdiction and within the county. But a Piccolo Pete can be modified to be an explosive device and that's the ones that I know that, as we say, the city of Bakersfield has eliminated. And we've had in the past where one has been modified, it actually, you know, caused an explosion and traveled across the street, hit a four-year-old girl in the chest. It didn't cause any damage or hurt her, but her parents called, you know, the police and we all responded to that and, yeah, it was a difficult situation.
Thank you. And, and I think I, I'm wondering, because I know that there's no other city in the county that currently has banned sane and state fireworks. Is, is that correct?
That is correct, to my knowledge.
So, so I mean, it, it could be that, the biggest, biggest concern for me is just how easily accessible will someone go to Visalia and Tulare and Lindsay and, and, you know, other cities to purchase the same fireworks and we'll just, I mean, I don't think we'll have enough code enforcement or to enforce it. Like, I mean, it would be very complicated, but I guess that's one of my concerns is I don't know if it makes sense and trying to, I don't know Bakersfield's ban and what they decided to do, but I'm curious to know how effective it's been for them to be able to mitigate the, the sane ones, but at least target the Piccolo Pete's, which can be pretty loud and be modified, like you said.
And again, the, the intent of the report is to generate discussion and be at the council's direction of what you like to have happen. We've had a, you know, the right 29 citations with the amount of folks we've had in the field is, 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 they're doing their best out there and there's a lot of fireworks. There's a, and there's a lot of illegal fireworks mixed in with them. But you are correct. If someone was to buy a, you know, fireworks package in the county right on our borders, right, where they'll have it and it'll have a Piccolo Pete in it because they're not banning it and then they come in and they're lighting it off with their kids and code enforcement rolls up on them and writes them a $1,500 citation. That can happen if we were to pass this, if, if you were to do that.
And if I may, Councilmember, I think that's one of the, talking about even going to other communities, it will be in your community because the county doesn't have any regulations on the number of booths that they offer in the city, in the city proper. We have a, we have a formula based on population, but within the county, if you wish to open one, then you, you know, you negotiate that was, they'll provide you one and you can open it and it's frequently around the city. And this has been an issue between all of the cities and the county with regards to, because most of the cities have a similar process of limited number of booths that are available. And so this has been an outstanding issue and so you, as the chief reflects, you, you could do away with them. They're still going to be sold just on your borders through the county.
Can we have a conversation with the county chief, Chief Norman? And? I've, I've had some conversations with Chief Norman and in regards to illegal fireworks and the task force and he has interest in it, as so does the city of Visalia, city of Tulare and the other chiefs that are in on operation related to put together a task force. And we had several conversations at the chief level, several conversations at the fire prevention officer level. And then COVID hit and hampered our efforts, but I would imagine soon as that, you know, swells back down, those talks will resume and the task force concept, which was born, I believe, from the police and sheriff's department and watching them be successful with their enforcement efforts, when I've seen them do patrol and writing for speeding tickets in the past, I think we will have a better success rate within our communities, but it's still going to be very challenging in the expectation of the general public and the council, what does that enforcement look like? I don't want to give anybody, you know, falsehoods in what we'll, we'll be able to achieve, but I, I know it'll be a lot better than 29 citations.
Yeah, I mean, the task force is a great idea, but you, do you think that the chiefs can go to their board or, or council members and see if they can also ban the Piccolo Pete side of the safe and sane?
We, we haven't had those conversations, but I can't see that happening in Tulare County. But again, I know, my conversations with him, he's concentrated mostly, and I'm talking about the county, Fire Chief Charlie Norman, on the illegal aspect of the fireworks and being able to possibly get the state to help us control them at the ports when they're brought in or from over state line. That's really where the, I think the metal meets the road on the enforcement. It's like catching a sea, you know, you got to see a fish in front of us and we have a very small net. And so do I see him wanting to do that? I can't speak for him. But that would possibly be challenging for him. So I, I don't know, but I can find out.
Mayor, may I comment? Thank you. I just want to reiterate that at the last council meeting, I simply stated as a comment that shortly after we had the meeting in July, our city manager was very proactive because we, he sent an email to the council of cities to place the item on the agenda because we were talking that we would need to have the participation of a bigger support in the form of the task force and have those communications on the table at the council of cities. We had received an email that the item would have been placed on the agenda for the council of cities. Now, we started this back in shortly after July and the communication in September. And we got the information that it was on the agenda for discussion on November the 18th. However, council of cities meetings were canceled for November and January. And now the next one won't be scheduled until March 17th, but we have reached out. We did that almost immediately from the last council meeting to this regard so that we can have the engagement, we can have the discussion with the other city representatives and even have the discussion and to include the enforcement efforts and go from there. That's all I have to say.
Your Honor, if I may, if no one else is going to say anything, but, you know, I think the safe and sains are wonderful. I mean, the kids have fun with them and they look forward to the Fourth of July because of them. But I think if we can eliminate the ones that make the noise and we can be the trailblazers of this, you know, and maybe other cities will catch on in the county. But I think we get rid of those, eliminate those from those boxes in our city and some, put some teeth in the, in the illegal fireworks. And when we did the 1,500, I didn't think that was enough. Let's make it 10,000. Fine, and they won't have them in our city. You know, if we catch them, you know, does it work $10,000 to them to fire off illegal fireworks, especially if their neighbor's going to, you know, call and, and protest against it? But I don't know if $10,000 is legal for us to put it, fine, but I think that'll stop it for sure. I know I'm not going to set off, take a chance to set it off, pay $10,000 fine. And most people probably don't have $10,000. They probably don't have a home we can put a lien on, but, you know, if we catch them, it's $10,000. That's what they pay us.
I saw that the city attorney unmuted, so I was wondering if there was a comment.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to basically second look at it. I know that we, we, we did come across some difficulties when we looked at this earlier on, but I think it's actually gotten more flexible as far as what you can, what you can find, because you can do it through the administrative citations. We can't do that from a criminal citation. It becomes a felony if you, with, if you have that high of a penalty, but I think that you may be able to do it administratively. I could look into it. You know, the other thing we can talk about too, I know in Chief Lapierre and I've talked about it in the past, is potentially looking at sort of tweaking our ordinance to include sort of the social host aspect and also the property owner aspect. That's not a cure-all. I'm just going to be frank with you guys. The problem ultimately is not, is, it always comes down to. The, the problem ultimately is not, i- is, it, it always comes down to catching people, being able to, to have the facts to back up a, a violation. Um, a lot of times these are shot off in the middle of the street. So, and so, you know, by the time you're, so it's, it's sometimes it's hard, it's almost, you know, it, it's not necessarily a whole lot easier to find the property owner or the involved or the, or the, or the social host of a party involved. Um, but it does broaden the umbrella a, a little bit more, makes, you know, it gives us a few more tools in the toolbox to, um, and, and then it starts to become more of an issue because now if you can find the property or if you can find the property owner a substantial amount of money, they're going to be, they're going to control better there, the, those that are, you know, at their parties, at their, at their Fourth of July parties. So, so the idea is it kind of provides a bigger disincentive. So that's another thing we could look at doing as well.
And thank you. Uh, one of the, the questions I had was about how we could implement the social host aspect into our, our ordinance and look into what that means and how that would, um, help, um, help, help the situation. Because unfortunately, you know, as stated, we're, we can't eliminate the situation just because around the periphery of the city, there's going to be booths. It's about mitigating and alleviating the outcomes from, uh, the negative outcomes that people are, are suffering from. So, but things that we can do, we can, um, restrict the individual sale of, of piccolo Pete's, knowing that, um, because there's, there's a few thi- in my opinion, this is my opinion. We, there's a few things we're looking at. Um, we're looking at, um, our citizens and, and, um, of course, there's great joy that comes from these fireworks, but there's also a great suffering that comes to, to, uh, some, probably an equal amount. I would say, especially if the, the duration is longer than the intended duration. So, looking at addressing that, there's also the fundraising aspect that, that we're looking at considering where even, uh, some mitigation or alleviation is going to affect the fundraising aspect um, of, of things. So, I think that within our control is definitely the, the fine. Um, and in my opinion, I think we could increase the, the, the penalty for having fireworks illegal and those we choose to restrict, which we could restrict the individual sale, which I mean are just the packages of piccolo Pete's by themselves, understanding that the, uh, other packages may include piccolo Pete's, but that's going to, uh, affect the fundraising aspect, which is the whole purpose of, of the, this, uh, initiating this safe and sane fireworks, um, program. So, um, I, yes, uh, there's a finite amount of these fireworks. One thing we have to understand, there's a finite amount of these and, and understanding by, by restricting them locally, it may just send them to outside of the area, but if we make them, um, not, not legal to set off in the city, now we're looking at, at the penalty being incurred, uh, by somebody who does set those off in the city. So that to me is a deterrent and again, a way to, um, alleviate, maybe not completely mitigate the situation. I, I had thought about reducing the amount of booths, but that doesn't really, um, address the situation. Um, I thought about it from a fundraising component, you know, the, if, you would give the smaller amount of booths a little bit more money, but that's not to say that they may not be in pro- closer proximity to those in the county and, and just send the money to places that, uh, we have less of a reportability aspect to, to quantify what's being sold. Um, so what leads me to the, the third and really most crucial element is the enforcement. The, the enforcement of this is the key element to what I think we're, we're looking at. Um, you know, we can eliminate the piccolo Pete's, but we still only have the certain amount of folks that are on the ground trying to enforce the whole city. And it's just, uh, trying to run back and forth from each corner of the city. I think what really needs to be addressed, and I know it can't be done through the ordinance, but through, through, um, direction given to councils, looking at how we implement, um, the technology of using drones to be able to locate not only, um, those that make sound like the piccolo Pete, but also all the illegal fireworks. Because as it is now, we don't currently use this technology in the city. In fact, the technology we, the times we do use this technology is on loan from the sheriff who may or may not be available at the times we need it, not just for fireworks, but for other activities. As well, this technology is beneficial for building inspection, uh, surveying water, drainage issues, or even, um, being able to, uh, you know, check the groundwater recharge i- in large areas. So there, there's a, even, uh, a code enforcement, uh, fire activity. There's lots of reasons why you can use this technology, not just for this thing. The reason I bring that up is because enforcement is to me the, the key to this whole issue. If there's no enforcement, no other elimination is going to make a big dent in the outcomes that we're looking for. So, what I see is maybe being able to say, no individual sales of piccolo Pete in, in the city or, um, you know, I mean, we could say no, no packages, but that really affects a lot of what the, uh, fundraising is going to be about. That might help to alleviate some of the availability of it. Um, if we could go a step further and eliminate it from the packaging, I don't know what that looks like. I would be in favor of that, but I'm just looking at the practicality of it. Also increasing the fine to twenty, two thousand or twenty-five hundred dollars, I think is, is also, uh, something, you know, worth looking at. And I don't, I'm not sure how anybody else feels, but it's the enforcement that, that I think is the key. Because without that, none of the other things really, really matter. Um, and you do hear the stories about the fundraising and that, to me, that's, you know, we're putting, we're putting discomfort um, second to fundraising and no matter how we slice it. So that's again, why the enforcement element comes in. So however, however, we can look at this and address these issues, I think, um, as a council, I think it'd be the most effective way. Because the comments we get is, you know, about, are kicking it down the road or are delaying the conversation or, oh gosh, we're going to have this again. Yes, we are because we keep getting feedback. And the last time the action was after the fact. Um, this time we have a chance to do something before the fact, but we're never going to eliminate it. It's just the steps we take to get to the point where we can tolerate the outcomes for those to really, um, from the noise, um, the, the bangs, even the air quality. I mean, there's, there's things to mitigate, but, you know, those are, those are all things to take into account. So, any other comments, I, I'd be glad to hear in the discussion.
Your honor, I think the task force will help with the enforcement, you know, but we'll have probably, if we include other cities in, uh, in the county, we'll have more boots on the ground per se and probably eyes in the skies using some of the county's equipment to start with. And I, and if I'm not mistaken, it's been years ago, but I was in charge of one of those booths. And you can customize the boxes the way you want, what you want in them, and they send you those boxes, um, that you, what, uh, fireworks you want in the boxes in each level, uh, each size. So, I don't know if you can still do that. Like I said, that was many, many years ago, but we could pick what we wanted in the box, so. But I, yeah, I think we need to do something and, and I don't really want to get rid of the safe and sane because, you know, the children look forward to that. I mean, you know, my grandkids would come over and we'd buy several boxes and let them, you know, light them up. But I just think we need to probably get rid of the ones that are loud and they shoot up in the air and, uh, you know, they're not just, um, because of the noise, but because of the possibility of fire. I mean, they just take off and you don't know where they're going. If they land on someone's roof or in a, you know, in a weeded area, you know, we have a fire started.
If, if, if I may, um, none of the safe and sane fireworks can go boom. They're, they, they do shrills and like the piccolo Pete's. But can be modified, uh, but the ones that are booming and, and making those are the illegals.
Well, I probably shouldn't say anything, a projectile up in the air that, uh, but I just think we need to start somewhere and I think it needs to start somewhere. And again, we maybe, you know, maybe the city of Portobello may be in the forefront of this throughout the whole county and, and get it started. You know, because it's just ridiculous the way they go off, the illegals go off and they're still going off. I sit in my, my room here and I still hear some going off now, you know, what have they got to celebrate? Uh, maybe there's a big, a birthday or anniversary or something, but they're still going off throughout the year. It's not just the Fourth of July or, or around the Fourth of July. So we need to put, you know, some real teeth in it to stop these things from going off. And I just don't think twenty-five hundred dollars, maybe, I think we should start at five, five. I like to go ten, but if you guys think that's too much, I'll go with five. And that will prevent it, I guarantee, well, I don't guarantee, but it's sure, think about it twice, we won't get as many.
Councilmember Carrillo, did you have a, a comment?
Um, I would just like to find a way, I, I support finding a way to, um, keep the safe and sane fireworks for the fundraisers, but I, I think I did hear some good feedback. Um, I thought that someone mentioned about the piccolo Pete may have been modified so that they weren't, um, able to be used, um, you know, to be, uh, more dangerous. I'm not sure if, but that would be something good we, we should follow up on. Um, but I also agree with, um, what council member Stowe said about the, um, if, if those packages could be modified to not even include those in the first place. Could that, if we were ahead of the game, could we, um, put limitations on that to make that clear that we don't want those in the city? Um, the other thing I agree with is increasing the fine according to, as high as we can, according to the recommendations um, by our attorney. Um, and there was one more thing. Oh, enforcement, uh, maybe that's some feedback we could get from the chief and, uh, the task force meetings. Uh, maybe there, they would have some good ideas or suggestions for us on enforcement and how, um, what kind of support they would need from the city in order to, to do that difficult job. A- and I agree, I, you know, live on a little hill and, I mean, those, the Fourth of July goes on basically for about two weeks. And, um, we see them popping up all over the place, so, um, yeah. Um, those are my, that's my feedback on those items.
If, if I may, mayor.
Please.
Well, the, uh, about the modified, uh, piccolo Pete's, there, it's my understanding that, uh, TNT does have a piccolo Pete. That's meets a certain standard. We'd have to check into it further. That cannot be modified to be an explosive device. And we could look at if, if the council's direction is to ban piccolo Pete's, ban ones that can be modified. And if the company has taken steps to make it where it is not modifiable, to become that felony device that we speak of, uh, it could possibly be the same as any other firework that's in the packaging that would be delivered.
Well, how high do those project into the sky?
They do not, that, they do not, they don't project in the sky. They're, they're a sound device that gives a shrill.
Oh, those are okay.
Yeah.
What are the ones called that project? Do they sell those in?
No, they do not. Safe and sane fireworks do not project up into the sky. They don't leave the ground. And the ones we're talking about that leave the ground are illegal fireworks.
Thank you.
Vice, vice mayor?
I'm being real sensitive, of course. Did you see that? I'm listening to all the dialogue and I have to say, um, first of all, I do have the concern with the piccolo Pete's and, um, the sales of it. Uh, I do think we do have to come to a consensus to a fine as to the dollar amount that, uh, legal counsel would say it's okay. Um, I know that council member Stowe would like to see it as high as five thousand for starters or even more if he could. Uh, and I know that I heard the dollar amount from, uh, two thousand, two thousand and five. I'm saying, okay, let's just keep it at three thousand for a start. And, uh, when we talk about enforcement, what I heard you say, mayor, and it was about the probability for enforcement with the technology of drones, I think that's a good conversation at another council meeting that could be brought back with the information because there are rules, regulations and a policy that would have to be looked at because us to go with federal aviation and a lot of that. So that would be a good discussion on enforcement for another council meeting. And let's go back to, um, the conversations. I am aware that, uh, Fire Chief has been communicating with some of his colleagues to the regard of, uh, the probability of a task force. And I understand and I know that we as a council have to be proactive to move in a direction of where it's going to be in the safety of all members of our community. And with that being, uh, uh, you've heard, I have no problem with the safe and sane fireworks. That's not, that's not a problem. I'm concerned with the sales of piccolo Pete. I would like to see a fine at three thousand dollars. And again, we would have to come back with the dialogue on enforcement. But that's where I stand.
Your honor, if I can say one more thing towards.
Yes.
When you have a large gathering and they're setting off the, the fireworks, the illegals, and you have maybe fifteen to twenty families there, three thousand dollars is not going to be enough because they're going to split the fine. Oh, go ahead, man. I'll, I'll, I'll help pay the fine, but they're going to think twice about the ten thousand dollar fine, splitting it because it's going to be substantial out of their pocket. You know, I'll donate fifty dollars to, or if you have all those families, a hundred dollars just to, you know, to protect you because we're over here and we, we're doing it too. But if it's a ten thousand dollar fine, they won't be so apt to, to divide the, the fine because it's going to, you know, it's going to hurt their pocket big time.
With that splitting of the fine, uh, I do know of one, uh, time that that's taken place, my understanding.
The council can tonight, can actually just, I mean, can, when, when you guys give us direction. I mean, the, we, you can give us direction to look at the highest level that we think is enforceable. And then we'll look at, and, and also how to just add more teeth so that we can make it as painful as possible. Um, yet still legal. So, I mean, if, if you guys give us that direction, then we'll take a look at it and, and let you guys know. And then you can decide early. I don't know that you have to actually figure out exactly how much you want to find tonight. Um, if you wanted to skip direction to look at what we, at, what's the outer limit of what we can do. Um, and I think also another, you know, again, if you add the property owners in and we're, you know, it, like I said, we won't always be able to catch a property owner, but when you do catch a property owner, um, it hurts more because it's not just a matter of it going to collections. You know, it can, it, we may be able to look at ways potentially of making that like a special assessment or a lien on the property, which that, they don't, property owners hate that, that, that all, that serves as a disincentive when that happens because now you're affecting their property. So, um, and the sa- and the poten- the future sale of their property for that matter, if they don't pay. So, um, so there are things, you know, we can look at ways to, to give it as much teeth as possible and provide as much of a disincentive as possible if that ends up being the direction tonight.
We'll let you do your job, huh? We're sitting here trying to do your job for you.
Not that I, I don't mind the assistance, but, but if you want me to look at it, I can certainly do that so that you're not having to speculate about what, what, what the outer limits are. So, since we know that's where, where, where you may want to go.
I had a follow-up question, uh, for, for, um, legal counsel.
Sure.
So, I know when you're talking about homeowners like, uh, and, and, and finding them, um, if it's, if it's a rental property, then it will be going to the rental property person, right? It wouldn't go necessarily to the.
You could actually look at potentially finding both. You could find the property owner and the actual person. If you're able to figure out who, 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 you know, is responsible for misusing the firework, you can certainly, there's no, there's no prohibition on, on citing both. But, um, I can actually speak to this from experience because the housing authority has dealt with this. The housing authority has received fines from a city concerning somebody that's used fireworks illegally and they were then served with eviction notices. So, that's teeth. When you can catch somebody, that's teeth. That's effective. So.
Right, because that gets to usually in a rental agreement, you'll have, uh, terms for eviction being not following, uh,
violating law.
And this was a big issue, may recall, uh, prior to Prop sixty-four and cannabis where there were rental preclusions that, you know, weren't allowed to do, uh, grow cannabis even on a rental property. grow cannabis even on a rental property, that was a term of eviction.
Yep.
So, if I'm hearing everything and just to kinda sum it up, we can give direction to um, and other council members can chime in, to uh, look into our ability to ban the or restrict the, the sale in packaging and out of, of the modifiable Piccolo Pete's, and also identify the markings or uh, what other identifiable nature of the ones that cannot be modified so that we can ju- determine whether there, those should be for sale, as well, we could, as I think suggested, have legal counsel look into what an appropriate fine would be um, to uh, be able to exercise our, our uh, this, our, the unfavorability of having the illegal fireworks as well as a Piccolo Pete, but not um, go to a point where it's just not gonna get paid as well, um, look into what technology could be used as far as drones and the cost and what that would look like for us to get, to be engaged in that. In that type of enforcement. And I, and I only say those things cuz I know that no matter what task force is, is being looked at, that's gonna take time, and right now, everybody is so, so compressed with trying to keep their, their areas just functioning, that a task force may not be uh, something that can come about quickly, even enough time to do what uh, is something by the Fourth of July, and we may be left on, to our own devices to, to figure out something, and I, I don't know if I summarized that correctly, counsel and chime in if you want, but that, that's kind of what I heard. At this point, it looks like we'd just be giving direction um, to have things come back in, in, in another meeting um, with what um, legal counsel and also Fire Chief could find as far as identifying Piccolo Pete's.
And one of the, one of the aspects of the uh, task force that came up and uh, and some of the research in this is to uh, city attorney is that when the police officers do that um, task force, they are given powers throughout the state of California. Like a CHP can write you a ticket in town, a code enforcement officer from the city of Isolia may not have the authority within the city of Portable, and that's something I'll have to figure out and find out if we are able to give them that authority.
We can look at that, too.
And then the other is, uh, I've, I've heard of other agencies using cost recovery as a portion of the fine because it takes time for the officers and uh, personnel and equipment, and there'll be time to be out there to do that activity. Enforcement could be tacked on to the administrative fine, which would drive it up as well. Uh, there is, I believe the city of Clovis has used drones in the past, they discontinued for some reason, I'll, I'll have to check that their Fire Chief up there. There was something to the aspect of uh, witnessing it firsthand, the firework discharge. I'm not seeing a drone, but I'll, I'll run all that to ground.
And uh, Mayor, may I add something?
Please.
Yeah, so I, I agree with all the recommendations that were said, um, I, I also wanted to to add and maybe to consider as part of the enforcement piece is to have a, an aggressive education campaign attached to it, so um, you know, we, we're, we're a very, um, you know, we have a lot of veterans in our community, and we have had, one of, we have the largest uh, largest, uh, one of the largest parades for veterans um, for years, right? So, I think that if we were to um, have an aggressive enforcement piece, but also even just like, you know, pushing out, like, you know, you can do anonymous tips through the portable app, right, like, and push that out, you know, like, you don't have to necessarily um, it, call or do something, you could do it from your app and, 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 and figure it out, you know, or practical ways, but also uh, at the booths, just to send out a message to folks in our community that, you know, to be considerate of all the, all the impacts that um, that these uh, fi- illegal fireworks have, so that they're more conscious of maybe being more willing to report so- someone, even if it is their neighbor, I mean, because I think that's some, it's hard to, to, you know, whenever you, you're neighbor to someone and maybe you don't wanna get in trouble and all that, right, so um, with each other and have those neighbor wars kinda thing. So, you know, there, there's ways to do it, and uh, if we can launch part of our, our, our enforcement piece, it's also letting folks know more about um, the different avenues for them to report these uh, illegal fireworks being used in the, in the city. Uh, and with any changes we're gonna be making too, and just doing that as much as we can, because I think that when we put it that into perspective with other folks, you know, in the community, and we're like, hey, you know, be considerate, you know, next time you, uh, if someone is using an illegal firework, you know, you do what's right and report it, you know, it's affecting dogs, it affects veterans, it affects people that have trauma. Um, it's impacting more people than it is benefiting uh, us, or the people that are doing the fireworks, right, the legal ones, so um, I, I would like to see that be part of, of, of these discussions in the future, as we bring it back, bring it back to council to discuss what's, what it looks like. To see what this ordinance would look, you know, for us in the city, so, just a suggestion.
Now, I, I'm glad you brought that up, I, I think the main thing that we need to really think about is, instead of after the fact, hearing these horror stories of friends of ours, people we know, people that, that address us on, on very um, you know, diplomatic levels on other things, um, telling us stories of, of the horror that they're facing with either their neighbors, their loved ones, uh, their, their companions or partners. That story needs to be told ahead of time, and it needs to be told to the people who are purchasing these items or even considering uh, doing things, I know there's, there's talus people out there who only seek to uh, make the noise and have the illegal fireworks, but their kids can be reached with these educational campaigns and understand the impacts, lifelong impacts that that they can have in a positive way, but also the negative impacts in that short term, or as the case may be, all year round, as we've been seeing. Um, I know, I hear it, I have, I, I have two giant trees that have not had as significant amount of water. I see them brown every single month, and I hear these aerials going off, and it worries me. Um, what kind of, what, what kind of fire could be started? But that's just the tip of the iceberg, I'm not talking about trauma that I would get, or, or any kind of uh, fear that would be uh, reminiscent of something even more terrifying in, in the past that a lot of these people do, so I agree with you completely, that that has to be upfront, an educational program to tell those stories instead of after the fact, like we've been doing as long as I can remember since I've been on council.
Well, and to that point, a, you know, an aggressive code enforcement campaign only works if, if people are aware of it. Because it, the whole point is to dissuade people, one way or the other, you can dissuade them with the moral arguments, but that's only gonna work on some, but then you can also try to dissuade them with the legal arguments and the fact that it's gonna cost them a huge amount of money, or it's gonna, it's gonna hurt if they get cited, so I think that those are both things that, if you don't have that aspect, then the code enforcement, it just becomes, like you said, it becomes an after the fact, so.
We can, we can uh, use the recorder, of course, everybody doesn't buy their recorder listed, but a good majority of people do, they'll pass that information along. It was in the recorder that you can't do this, this is why, and what happened, so uh, I think education would be, would be wonderful. And that's just one aspect, you know, we have our, our, our water bills, and, you know, put it in the mail, and so, we can use certain things to, uh, to make that happen.
Yeah, we could better put it on the, on the transit, like, that we do the water, water schedule, you know, kinda thing.
The city of Isolia had a fat- fatality, was it one or two years ago? Due to an illegal fireworks, so.
Yeah, we've had uh, we've had a mortar knocked over before and launched into a uh, uh, living room where a, a mother and a infant child were just leaving that room, and everyone, it exploded, every inch of that room had a black mark on it from the sparks that went everywhere. Uh, one of the things I'm gonna do is, and just not reaching out to the local op area, but I'll be reaching out to some of my colleagues in the, in the, throughout the state to find out who's got the most aggressive fireworks program out there, so that when we do bring back stuff, if it hasn't come up in this conversation, whatever I find out there, I'll bring back if it, it yields value uh, to the program, and with the parameters that the council's giving direction.
And thank you, I think, I think we've, we've given a lot, awful lot of direction as we've kinda worked our way through the conversation, so um, I look forward to having it come back, and there needs, as you mentioned, legal counsel, there's not any, any action we need to take, it's just direction to be able to get information at this point, is that correct?
That's correct, I think we have, the direction is sufficient for tonight, thank you.
Okay. Okay, great, um, unless there's anything else, counsel?
What, what I would say, just consistent with the, with your current ordinances, uh, in there are timelines that talk about, um, and really, part of the part of the nature of this report was to check in with the council as you're now uh, transitioning into your next fireworks uh, season phase, so to speak, so you have uh, upcoming later this month, uh, would be the lottery uh, of those that wish to be considered and be awarded those, those elements, so if that is not an interest, uh, those timelines can certainly be pushed, but that would require an, an action.
I didn't hear that in direction, is there any direction on that? I didn't hear any earlier.
I do have a thought, is it necessary, if we're gonna still talk about this and work on this, to have that lottery in February? Could they push it back a month, would that delay people from getting their orders from fireworks, or does that matter? I don't know if they can just.
I don't, well, it, it depends, are you guys still looking at changing anything with regard to that? I didn't, I didn't hear that tonight, unless there's some kind of, that, that process shouldn't necessarily be affected by what Chief Lapierre and I are gonna do with regard to the ordinance.
Well, we're talking about the Piccolo Pete's, that's the only thing, you know, they come in those boxes.
Right, but that isn't affected by the lottery, I'm sorry, John, it means.
I was just saying, because it, it's in writing in front of you what the nature of the report was, that uh, because this had been discussed by the council back at the end of July, there had been good faith efforts, uh, called, you know, meetings with my colleagues, uh, the chiefs of their respective colleagues, and attempts to try to get this for the council cities. That was unfortunately, the, the council cities haven't met for six months, so um, uh, this was a matter of circling back with the direction that had previously been given uh, in the, in accordance with that.
Yeah.
And, and if I may, the uh, the, the lottery wants those lottery winners, there's coordination with the vendors on getting their state license as well, and I would imagine that the states, you're having difficulties with COVID. But uh, there's timeframes that need to be met that are uh, regulations outside of our jurisdiction that are state fire marshal driven, timeframes that they have to meet, that'd be able to even get their permit to, to shoot them off, I mean, sorry, to sell.
And, and the issues with the Piccolo Pete's aren't, I don't see anything here that would, where the lottery system would affect that, so unless there's something you're gonna make any kind of change to the, the existing system of granting the permits, I don't think you, there's no need to hold that up, that doesn't mean the council can't decide they want to delay it, but I don't think there's any need necessarily to do it based on the direction given tonight.
I just, it was a full disclosure that you are now in that season, and, or will soon be there, and I didn't want that to be, well, you know, we weren't aware of that when we had this conversation.
Right.
And I, and I think that, that's, you know, it's great to bring that up because there are, there are the vendors, there are the budgetary aspects, there, you know, the planning, the the met, uh, people power to do it, that, that people will be looking to engage, just on the thought of applying it. And so, uh, I, as I mentioned before, my, one of my considerations was in limiting the amount, and that would have changed that, but I, I I dropped that because it wouldn't have really changed the outcomes we're talking about, so I don't really feel we need to change the, the schedule of, of the lottery at this point, unless anybody else has a different thought.
And, and don't take my words as suggesting that, it was more disclosure, you're.
Just wanna make sure that he knew that he wanted to, they better do it.
This is coming, and so, I, I, you know, so, as we may be targeting, say, the first meeting in March with bringing back some of this information, uh, a lottery will have, will have already occurred according to the timelines.
Councilmember Stowe?
No, I didn't say it wasn't John's suggestion, it was mine, if we need to push it back, if we had something legally, we had to put it back into the ordinance or uh, to let them know before they um, pull their, you know, before we pulled the lottery, if they still wanted to be involved in.
If there were substantial numbers of types that you guys were thinking about limiting, then it might be something that somebody would wanna know before they, you know, decided to move forward with the lottery process, but I didn't hear that either tonight, the only, the only thing I heard was the issue with making sure that the Piccolo Pete's are, are the type of, that can be unmodifiable, and it sounds like that may that the industry may be, already be sort of dealing with that issue already, so it may not be as big of a deal. I, I don't, I'm not seeing a, a huge direct issue for the, for the lottery recipients.
Okay, so consensus on the direction, counsel, we're good?
We're good.
Okay, so thank you for building the conversation, so we can move on to the next item.
Switching back and forth between different screens here, I apologize, so it's not as easy as being in front of you. The, uh, our next item is gonna be a consideration of modifications to our cannabis ordinances, and the city attorney will be providing that uh, staff report, uh, I do know that uh, council member Carrillo um, is does have a conflict of interest here, and I believe plans not to participate.
Correct, so do I step out of the room?
Yes, you're gonna need to step out of the virtual room. You yourself, and, and actually, I, I, maybe Fernando, are you able to place Kelly in a waiting room on this one? Is Fernando there?
Uh, I'm, I'm here, um, what I can do is I can go ahead and place her into the attendee room for the meantime.
Oh, okay, that'll work, and then if you just, what I would say is, yeah, I would walk out, I, I would take yourself out of the room, Kelly, and then um, maybe we can text you when the item's over, so.
Okay, should I just leave this meeting and then log back on?
No, you don't need to do that, you can, if you just shut your uh, video off and you're mute, and then, and then, you know, we're, use the honor system, but you're gonna be out of that you'll, we would presume.
Oh, got it.
Got it?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lala, as members of the council. As you all know, at your meeting, uh, way back in May of two thousand nineteen, it seems like it was so long ago now, uh, the council actually adopted a couple ordinances, number, uh, numbers eighteen fifty-three and eighteen fifty-four, those allowed and provided for a total of the two cannabis adult-use dispensary businesses and one medical dispensary. Um, so along with those regulations, you also authorized the issuance of the RFP process uh, for the two adult-use dispensaries, and in November, on November third of two, twenty twenty, you determined your awardees, and at that time, you also expressed an interest in revising the regulations to allow the council to grant an additional permit for a wholly locally owned and operated retail adult-use dispensary. Um, so then, back in just this past December, the council provided additional direction concerning revisions to those ordinances, and referred the matter to the ad hoc committee uh, for any additional input. So, in accord with the direction that we received, attached our two draft ordinances before you tonight. The first ordinance amends chapter fifteen, article seven of the Portable Municipal Code, and that in specifically uh, makes amendments to section fifteen eighty-seven. The revisions expand the number of permits that the council may but are not required to authorize. The revisions further clarify that the council's power um, to determine and set the terms and conditions of the granting of those uh, permits. So, it just kind of makes sure that it, that the city council's powers are expanded enough to to provide for the specific terms and conditions upon which those permits can be granted. The second ordinance amends section three oh one point two three G two of the city's development code. Um, and that's so, but the references in the land use restrictions are consistent with section fif- to fifteen eighty-seven, so these two basically go hand in hand together. One is the land use aspect and one is the regulatory aspect, and so we needed to make little changes uh, to both. Um, with regard to the selection criteria and process, the council's ad hoc committee met on January twenty-second to review and discuss the selection criteria to recommend to the city council. The committee members recommended that the selection process be limited to two candidates, and specifically the two that have already applied that were wholly uh, locally owned and operated, and that actually pre-qualified through the third-party review process. And so, that is TRADC and Bloom Farms. This would save the city uh, staff time and resources, and would expedite the selection process. So, that was basically the, the committee's basis for that, um, and I'm sure that both uh, members are with you tonight, and they can elaborate on that as well. In addition, the committee members recommended a second interview process for those two applicants. If the council is in agreement with this direction, the committee can work with staff concerning the selection process and interview questions. So, um, so tonight, those are the two big items, there is one more though, and it was, it was touched on actually um, by uh, I think by council member Pena Loza, um, as well as, I've been mentioned in an oral communication, so I'll, I'll bring it up. So, with regard to the negotiations for the two that have already, that have So with regard to the negotiations for the two that have already, that have received the awards, the ad hoc committee, um, and staff thought it would be a good idea for that, that group, the ad hoc committee members and staff to actually be the negotiating team for that. So, um, I thought it would be good also to get direction from council, just make sure that they are, that they, um, think that's a good idea. And then we can go ahead and proceed with those negotiations and get that rolling. So the recommendations before you tonight are that you consider and give first reading to ordinance, um, the first ordinance and ordinance of the city council, the city of Porterville amending chapter fifteen, article seven of the municipal code, cannabis dispensaries, um, allowing one additional cannabis adult use dispensary business. And two, to consider and give first reading to an ordinance of the city council, the city of Porterville amending chapter twenty-one, development code, series three hundred, section three oh one two three of the Porterville Municipal Code concerning cannabis land uses and commercial cannabis activities to, and authorize along with that particular one, uh, the setting of a public hearing for February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. So there is a little bit of a public hearing process that we do need to go through with regard to the zoning when we go to amend the development code. So that's what that's about. Um, and then finally, number three, consider recommendations provided by the city council's ad hoc committee and staff related to the selection criteria and process for selecting a wholly owned and operated adult use dispensary and provide direction as the council deems appropriate concerning that selection process. That's my report. I'm here to answer any questions if you need me. Thanks.
I have a question, Your Honor, if I may.
Yes, please, council member Stowe.
Counselor, uh, if, does this ordinance, once we pass it and we're still trying to select the two locals, will this, um, eliminate the, well, not eliminate, but, uh, delay the others from opening or can they get started?
You can absolutely, there's no, that we, that we, we are not holding up that process for this. So we can certainly begin the negotiate, there's nothing to prevent us from beginning the negotiations process other than to get direction concerning how you want that to proceed. So no, it does not need to hold that up.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Yes, please, Vice Mayor.
Okay, when I was looking at the selection criteria and process to this regard, um, with the interview, I mean, I don't have a problem with having the interviews, but I'd certainly like to see some of the questions, um, changed. I mean, you're interviewing the same people. We've scored the same people and now we're going to re-interview them. And, uh, they've, they already know if we're gonna use, I mean, if we were to use the same questions, the same formula, they would pretty much be prepared to pretty much answer the same thing. So I could be a standalone in this. However, I could say where some of the part one of the interview could stay. But definitely in, um, part two, I think, um, some of that has to be changed. Mo, most of the language would have to be changed to be a little different to this regard. That's just my comment.
And I, I appreciate the comments. I think as part of our conversation, uh, we did talk about some of the questions and how they may be, uh, reconfigured, um, or even, um, given a more specific range based on what the topic of wholly local would be, as well as, uh, with those questions being determined, having a, a more, um, a less adaptable system of questions that are, that, that don't, aren't adjusted at the last minute. So a more finite, uh, group of questions that we all know are going to be asked that night without any, uh, anything to prolong or, or differentiate the, the, the process for each of the individual applicants. Um, as well as, um, during the second interview, um, that the, because as we, we know, the first round was very lengthy. And, um, i- in football, you can ice the kicker, uh, by delaying how long he has to, uh, kick that field goal by making them wait either longer or shorter. And this was an attempt to get them in a closer timeframe with more finite questions that dealt with the specific subject matter of being wholly local. So I, and I appreciate you bringing that up. Those would be some, some things that we would consider, um, yeah, uh, uh, in the process.
Yeah. Your Honor, if I may?
Please.
What are we considering local? Just Porville or outside the, in the Porterville area or Visalia? Lindsay, uh, is that local or just?
The, the two that, well, we didn't, because the, the city, the committee actually decided on keeping the, the just Bloom and TREDC, if that's what the council decides to do. I mean, the council can define what it wants to mean for local.
That's another thing I wanna talk.
Yeah. If, if you were gonna keep just those two, then it, it, it actually is, is sort of like the greater Porterville area is really what it's, cuz both are from the area, not necessarily. And I think they both have, well, they both own property within the city limits, but that, a lot, a lot of them, you could say that about a lot of the applicants. So, um, but they own other property unrelated to the businesses in the area. And in, and, and I think in most, even in maybe in most respects, the city, so.
Well, personally, if I may, Your Honor, I think we probably should open up, you know, you used the football analogy about a kicker and icing them. And when a kicker doesn't make the cut and another team calls him and he has to go through a trial with a bunch of other kickers, you know, because he didn't make the first cut. And I think you probably should interview, you know, a couple more, open it up real, and then see, I mean, if there's anyone else that changed their mind out there like, God, I missed that. I should have done that and made that, could be better. I don't know. That's just my thought. I just, if you don't make the first cut, you go through tryouts again.
May I comment? May I comment onto that, please?
Please.
Thank you for that comment, council member Stowe, because I too had a concern, um, with just interviewing the two. We have, and, and I understand why, uh, the recommendation was made, but I don't know if that, you know, I don't know if someone else that is from Porterville wholly local that owns property in Porterville that didn't do it the first go around might not want to be a participant now. And I would have to echo that sentiment.
I, I, I think, and this did come up as part of our, our ad hoc group. And I think that, um, in, in the summary that the legal counsel gave in the staff report, um, the, the decision to go with these two was leaning heavily on, um, the acknowledgement of the third party and the significance of the third party reviewer. Now, with the suggestion that we may have more applicants, that would mean that we would engage with the third party potentially, unless we wanted to do away with the third party review, um, criteria, which I think, I don't know if that would, that would lend us the same, um, I guess, uh, evidence of, of background research and experience and being able to answer the, the legal questions that the third party reviewer reviewed. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but it may re-engage and there may be, uh, a different, um, more staff time, um, costs associated, whether it's to us or the applicant in determining how that works. Uh, but also, um, since, you know, we've, we've done a very transparent process and we've tried to be very open with how it's done that, um, eliminating the third party from an additional license may prove problematic in the eyes of other, other people who either chose not to apply previously, did apply previously, or are still, um, in the running. So those are the considerations that the ad hoc committee had and, and your, you know, your concerns are, are very well noted. But we did, I wouldn't say we ran those considerations completely to ground, but we did, um, look at the possibility of others being involved and, and as I, those are the things that I wanted to mention to you that we considered.
Well, now, if we do open it up, I think we should have the third party. We should make it consistent what we're doing. You know, it won't cost, I mean, staff's gonna have to do a little work, but they got most of the criteria down. So it shouldn't take that much time from staff. And we just open it up again and, and see who comes in, what we get. And, uh, it may be, you know, three others out there decide they wanna do it, but thought about doing the medical, said, nah, you know, this, just wanna make any money, but I can make some money off this. And I just don't wanna leave, you know, anyone out if we're gonna do this, you know, let's do it properly.
C- council member Penyloza, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did, Mayor. Uh, and I appreciate the rest. I mean, this is part of the conversation that we're having, you know, giving the recommendations and I appreciate the feedback. I, I do agree, we did have with, with the mayor that we had a very, we did have a good conversation about this and, uh, and really we're thinking through about what would be the best. Um, and, uh, moving forward. Um, and, and so since it seems that we may, you know, be considering opening up the process, I think whenever we had that conversation, one of the questions that I asked in the committee meeting that we had was, uh, would, would that mean that, um, other applicants that were not chosen, uh, could then in, uh, get someone else to apply and, and another, like a different application and then enter this new process, you know? How do, how would that legal aspect work? And I think it kind of came to the conclusion that it kind of made sense for us to, um, the reason that we were considering wholly lo, these two wholly local is because they're within the vicinity, uh, and, uh, the fact that they were, um, I don't, there was a public comment that was mentioned today about, about this, that they were, they're considered wholly local, that we don't have to make this decision. But I don't know if also for, for me, it was like, how much percentage is locally owned, right, as well too? That's a big, that's a big, that's not the same, these two right now, they're, they're a hundred percent locally owned. They don't have any, any other people behind the scenes or, uh, you know, that they're gonna be their, um, owners of the company, right? So that's a big difference between these two and the other applicants as well. Um, but it was mostly the cost of it too, um, and the whole process. We, we would have to go through the whole process of, uh, of waiting for, um, for folks to apply, third party review, then have an interview with everyone else and then make a decision, including the two that we're considering now. So for us, it just seemed, it just seemed more, uh, simpler to do, do it with the two, uh, current applicants that were on the radar. But, um, I don't know if, if legal counsel can just, um, maybe provide some, some, uh, feedback to, or maybe answer the question of like, would, could, could some, if we opened up the process all over again, basically the two applicant, these two applicants would not have to go through third party review because they already did, or would they have to go through third party again? And that's something that we would have to figure out. I, is that something, or would they just not go through their party review and the rest of the new applicants would then go through their party review? Um, and I don't know.
I think, I mean, I think you can legally do it, uh, any of those ways. Um, you know, I, I think that it. Honestly, I think you can do it either way. I, you can, I mean, you, you'll get, you can potentially get complaints, but I don't think that they'll be ballot, they'll be truly, like, from a legal standpoint ballot. I mean, I can get, I know that it would be an inconvenience, I'm sure, for the two that have already gone through all that process to go through that, to go through a, you know, to say, okay, we're gonna do over, sorry. Everybody starts from, from, you know, ground zero. You go through the review. They'll still theoretically potentially have an advantage if we, if we run the, if we run the review in the similar fashion, because they know they've already qualified once before. So, um, so they're likely to meet the threshold, you know, especially if we're gonna utilize the same, you know, s, the same individuals. Now, if you're doing a whole different process, then I guess, you know, you don't know. So we'd have to kind of make those decisions. It will definitely take more time and resources and, and staff time. It just will. An RFP process, doing a whole nother RFP process is just, it, it will still take time up. I mean, the, that RFP was generated, um, from community development department, along with, you know, my, my input. We, yes, we've already done it once, so it'll be easier the second time around, so we can do whatever the council wants here. But I think that was part of the interest there that we're looked at, we're saving time and res, time, saving, um, resources, not having those other two potentially go through, the process that they've already gone through. If we're going to open it up again and not have those two go through the process, then we would have to literally use the identical process. That would, what we would have to, so that we don't have a situation where, where it's viewed as unfair by any of the parties. It would need to be the same criteria and those, the, those that the, the new, any potential new applicants would have to qualify through the same process that the other two did. But I think we could probably do that and have them scored. Um, if, if that was what the council wanted to do, so we could, we could look at that. Otherwise, it's really just policy considerations.
Your Honor, if I may, again, please. I mean, if it's gonna cost us money to redo this and whatever and go through the whole process again, then, you know, I'll just take the recommendation of the committee, because actually I'm, I'm really gonna vote no on it anyway, because I always have, I was against it, so. But I was just throwing it out there. If we're gonna do this, let's make it fair for everyone. But if it's gonna cost us, you know, everyone did have an opportunity to, to turn their application in, in previously, so it was fair in that regards. But if, you know, if we're just gonna change things and say, okay, we're gonna bring the two wholly locals in, then there may be some others out there. So that was my only reason for them. And I'll just, I'll let you guys decide what you wanna do. I just had my say.
Vice Mayor, did you have some?
Well, I would like to comment, and if I am out of line, legal counsel can tell me. She can nudge me and say, stop it. I know that at the last interview process, this is a scenario that, uh, all of us disclosed if there were any conversations that were made with any of the entities that had applied in the process. I just have a question. Since the last interview process, have these two that would be up for interview reached out to any of the council members? I know that they haven't reached out to me.
Not I.
Okay. Then, after hearing and after listening, I want to specifically state that the questions, especially in the, the selection criteria and the process, that whatever the questions and whatever the, if you're gonna do the part one, the part two, that there has to be a revamping of bringing it back, only because they have already been interviewed. We've asked them the question. We have scored them there. Now we're going to do it over again. I certainly want, don't want to have the same substance in the form of the questions to that process.
Yeah, I, I should have probably elaborated on that in the staff report. That was definitely the, the committee's, uh, take on it as well. That it should be, but like, if we're gonna, if they're gonna do, that they wanted to do another, a different, a, a, a separate interview process, but with definitely with different questions.
So, okay, that, that was my concern, uh, all along. I don't have any further comments or any further questions. And, uh, right now at this moment, I'm going to make the recommendation that we.
Before you do that, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, just to, if we're gonna interview those two, why interview them when it's just those two we're gonna bring back? Let's just put them in the system instead of going back through the interviews. We've interviewed them once. And if it's just gonna be those two that we're gonna bring back in, let's just put them, let's just make it simple, put them through the system.
Well, the system would be noticing a meeting and having you guys pick one.
Just, we're just picking one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, and again, that's based on an assumption that you pass an ordinance that, that.
Right. We still gotta pass the ordinance first, but yeah.
I'm trying, I'm trying to make that recommendation. Thank you very much. All right.
Misunderstanding. I'm sorry.
No, don't apologize. All right. Let's do this. Um, with all the discussions and all the dialogue that we have occurred and the clarifications have made, I make the motion that we accept the staff recommendation as written out under item number one. Consider and give the first reading to ordinance number, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Porterville amending chapter fifteen, article seven of the Porterville Municipal Code Cannabis Dispensaries, allowing one additional cannabis adult use dispensary business, number two. Considering give first reading to ordinance number, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Porterville, amending chapter twenty-one, development code, series three hundred, section three oh one point twenty-three of the Porterville Municipal Code Concerning Cannabis Land Uses and Commercial Cannabis Activities and authorize the setting of a public hearing for February the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And third, uh, the recommendations provided by the city council's ad hoc committee and staff related to the selection criteria and process for selecting a wholly locally owned and operated adult use dispensary and provide, and we have provided direction as the council deems appropriate. adult use dispensary and provide, and we have provided direction as the council deems appropriate.
And I will second, uh, the vice mayor's motion.
I will just add that you ca- I, I'm going to presume that you include, because I didn't, and this is my fault, I didn't have it on the recommendation, that you're also, um, waving, reading by, except for by title, which you have already graciously done, so we want to
I've done that. I've done that.
Okay, and so we have a motion and a second, is there any more conversation? Okay, so we, we can call for the vote.
Councilmember Carrillo? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilmember Penialloza?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Um, just one thing, I, I, again, I apologize, I read this report three times and I overlooked allow one in your report, Julia, so that's what I'm thinking, I was confused with, like, why are we doing this?
Oh.
It's my fault, I mean, I, I read it three times and I overlooked it three times, so thinking that we're going to go to, but my, uh, vote is no.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Reyes?
Okay, passes three one.
And just so I understood correctly, I don't need to read by title?
No, you do not, because that, thank you very much, yeah.
Okay, thank you, uh, for that, and, uh, we can move on to the next item.
We need to bring back Councilmember Carrillo.
Your honor, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, bring her back into the, uh, webinar.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, uh, so thank you, your honor, your
Oh, you're on mute, John?
Didn't want to, okay, apologize, uh, uh, thank you, your honor, uh, next, the, the third scheduled matter this evening is, uh, to receive your biannual report in regards to rescue mission update, Mr. Biden, I'll provide that stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, Honorable Mayor and City Council. At its meeting on June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, the city council adopted resolution forty-three dash two thousand and nineteen, approving the conditional use permit for the new Porterville Rescue Mission to allow for a social services facility located thirty South A Street. As outlined in the resolution, condition number one, in compliance with the Porterville Municipal Code, chapter twenty-one, section three zero one point zero nine, social services facilities shall provide adequate and accessible sanitary facilities, including lavatories, restrooms, refuse containers, sufficient patron seating facilities for dining, effective screening devices such as landscaping, and masonry fences in conjunction with outdoor activity areas. To meet these requirements, New Porterville Rescue Mission was to continue to work on site improvements and stay in touch with city staff until all items have been completed. C E P two thousand eighteen dash zero four one dash C includes a requirement that the staff provide a biannual update to the city council on the status of the project, which is the purpose of this report. On January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, city council was provided an update on the status of the New Porterville Rescue Mission project. The update included that New Porterville Rescue Mission had been issued a permit for the structural revisions to correct the issues encountered during demolition process on November the twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty. Staff met, staff met with the new pres- portal, well, the New Porterville Rescue Mission on January fourth, twenty twenty-one, to discuss the progress of the project. The New Porterville Rescue Mission informed staff that the project timeline had been impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic, noting that they had received a letter from one of their suppliers informing them that the delivery of their order had been delayed due to the pandemic. A framing inspection was provided by the building division on January twenty twenty-one and a second framing inspection on January eighth, twenty twenty-one. The New Porterville Rescue Mission passed a second framing inspection, is now working towards completing the plumbing and electrical improvements of its permit. The status of the New Porterville Rescue Mission project has not changed since a report provided on council, to council on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. It is expected that the New Porterville Rescue Mission will schedule an inspection for the plumbing and electrical improvements outlined in the permit next. As staff's recommendation, the city council considered the biannual report and provided direction as deemed appropriate. Thank you, available for questions?
Councilmember Carrillo, any, any questions for staff?
No, not right now.
Councilmember Stowe? Councilmember Penialloza?
Yes, Mayor, um, I would, not a question, more like, more of a comment. Um, I'm glad to see them working with their staff and answering back and responding back and making progress to, uh, the new Porterville Rescue Mission, so, um, that's good to hear. Uh, I'm glad that they're, they're trying to continue to address, uh, what they need to be doing to be able to come into compliance, so, um, yeah, those are my thoughts based on the report, thank you, Jason.
Vice Mayor?
Um, pleases me that they are reporting and that they are bringing information back and, um, that do we know when, um, the inspection, that anticipated inspection on the plumbing and the electric improvements are going to be made?
I, I'm sorry, we don't know that information, I reached out to the building division earlier today to confirm, um, that they hadn't been scheduled for those inspections and they hadn't. Um, I would imagine that they would be in the coming weeks.
Okay, that, that was the only question I had. Thank you.
Okay, and I didn't have any, any questions, um. Is just, is this mostly just an update to let us know, or do we need to take action to accept it?
Ju- just an update, the, um, conditional use permit outlines that there is, uh, two updates annually that bind an update, and so this, um, is in compliance with the resolution adopted.
Right, and, and absent any other, um, reportable a- a- activity to the council, which we would provide some informational updates if there were notable figures, that this would be back before the council, again, the first meeting of August.
Okay. Good to hear the update, and thank you. And with that, I think we can move on to the final item.
Yes, thank you, your honor, your final scheduled matter for this evening is your, uh, your regular, um, status of local declaration of local emergency as it relates to COVID nineteen. Provide a brief synopsis, the council first made its declaration back on March seventeenth of two thousand twenty, and last uh, took action and its continuation of the emergency at your last meeting on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Um, of significance since that meeting, uh, was the determination by the state last Monday, January twenty-fifth, to end the stay-at-home orders, uh, which the council is aware, and that end of stay-at-home orders did four things, uh, it, uh, removed the, um, no gathering guidance that had been, there was not supposed to be any gatherings, and so now essentially you reverted back to, uh, the three households could gather out, outdoors, or you reverted back to what it was considered the holiday gathering. All, so any, the non-gathering guidance was eliminated. Uh, in addition to that, most significantly was the uh, returning back to the blueprint for a safer economy, which, uh, we remember as the county tiers, uh, which Tulare County is in the purple tier, along with fifty-three other counties. Uh, as, uh, and then two other, um, elements were eliminating the only essential travel requirement, uh, as well as what was referred to as the curfew for non-essential businesses, so both of those actions were removed as part of the removal of the stay-at-home orders. Uh, just a couple of items, uh, uh, of update, uh, and, and we've talked about homelessness, uh, uh, a bit, uh, this evening. Uh, the county is currently reporting under its project, uh, room key that of the hundred and sixteen rooms they have under contract, seventy-three of them are filled, uh, as of today. I, I spoke about they're going back to the blueprint for safer economy, the city council had taken an action to authorize outdoor dining uh, and, and providing a permit for that and review process. That action by the council, uh, had an expiration attached to it of January thirty-first. So, uh, an, an action that would be asked of the city council, which I know the COVID ad hoc committee, uh, Mayor Reyes and Councilmember Carrillo would uh, request the city council's consideration of extending that, uh, permit process, um, so that we can continue with the permit, permits that we are currently considering for several local restaurants. Uh, and as I spoke about being in the purple tier, uh, according to the county's report today, to get to the red tier, which is the next, um, next most favorable tier, you would need to be at seven cases per hundred thousand on a seven-day average, and right now Tulare County is at forty-seven point three positive, positive, uh, new cases per day at a hundred thousand, uh, with a twelve point two percentage per hundred thousand positivity rate, which you would need to also get to eight percent, uh, on that. And then the health equity index that you may recall of disadvantaged communities, um, would need to be at eight percent as well, and right now that's at fourteen point six percent, so, uh, still a lot of, uh, although it's trending in the right direction, still a lot of uh, distance that needs to be traveled in Tulare County to get to the red tier. Um, according to county reports, there are eight hundred and thirty-four active cases in the Porterville area, as of today's report. Uh, Porterville Developmental Center is showing that they have nine patients currently under care, uh, of the hundred and twenty-three beds that they have available. Important to note in vaccination, right now, the county is reporting that they are providing vaccinations in tiers one through three of phase one A, and have now started into phase one B, tier one. Um, most notably, the state has indicated that they're going to be, uh, taking over the vaccination, um, process and using a third-party contractor, which is cross, uh, which is anticipated for them to assume, uh, the vaccination process by the end of this month, February. We've had previous conversations about the eviction moratorium, which, uh, the previous eviction moratorium and the executive orders uh, were set to expire on January thirty-first, there was a legislation that was passed that extended that eviction moratorium until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we've talked about, uh, uh, rent and utility assistance, and it's being reported by the county of Tulare that they are going to receive as a direct federal funding, uh, from the federal government to Tulare County directly thirteen million dollars this month, uh, that comes a product of the nine hundred billion dollar uh, recovery and relief package that was signed by President, then President Trump. Uh, so thirteen million dollars is coming to Tulare County, which Tulare County, uh, would be using its nonprofit partners to distribute those funds, which most notably, if I understand correctly, are United Way, Sea Set, and Proteus. And then finally, uh, would make mention that the state of California is currently doing, uh, uh, has reopened its uh, small business mini grant program that opened today, uh, there's a one-week application period, so it opened today, and it will close at five, I believe, it will close on Monday, the eighth. It may be eight P M., but, uh, uh, we've done social media, um, social media, uh, messaging in that regard and supported that, but also wanted to highlight that. So with that, I, I thought I'd just give a brief rundown, um, but most notably, uh, I, I can speak for the ad hoc committee that the, the council's consideration of extending the outdoor dining permit tired, the council is happy to answer to questions or providing further information.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
I don't have any questions, but if there are no other questions by the other council members, I'd, oh, let's have Councilmember Stowe, because I wa- I was going to make a motion, almost immediately.
Uh, well, you can make the motion, we can second it for discussion, I just
Thank you, okay, well, I'm going to make the motion that we extend, uh, the restaurant permitting process to the end of June and to ex- and to continue the proclamation of local emergency.
I'll second it for discussion, for second And, uh, your honor, if I may?
Please.
We had a, um, public comment, uh, about our playgrounds that are still closed. Is there anything in the governor's thing that we can open them up, John, or are they still in that category not to open them, or?
Yeah, I, I, absolutely, it's allowable, it's been a specific action of the council not to open them.
Alright, my question to the council, do we want to open up our playgrounds, or we still want to protect our citizens from, uh, each other, but, you know, if everyone else is doing it, and the governor says, we've been going by the, uh, the state recommendations, if he said we can open them up, then then we should be consistent and open them back up, if that's the case.
Oh, I just, I appreciate you bringing that up, and that was one of the topics of conversation in the ad hoc committee. Uh, we, we had a, a conversation and, and, um, I wouldn't call it a presentation, but convincing enough, uh, uh, discussion with Donnie Moore, uh, from Parks and Leisure about the protocols for, um, what it looks like to clean or to sanitize the playgrounds, scheduling for that, um, and, um, if, if, and we could have a, he could, he could let us, let us know tonight what, what that means, if, if that's something that we wanted to consider, if that would ease your mind, uh, as to how to do it, because that was definitely something we were discussing and, and hearing the public comment. Um, and also, um, as I mentioned to Mr. Moore in the ad hoc committee meeting, seeing those, the playground barricades and the the fencing just knocked down and, and people in there, um, and also knowing that code enforcement and P D have to drive by and, and either, you know, wonder if they should stop or stop and, and stop that, knowing that it is allowable, um, we, we did have that conversation, so if you, if you wanted to indulge him for a minute, I'm sure he could let you know what, what he told us.
Please.
Sure, thank you, uh, yeah, the state, uh, the six main things that they're saying are mandatory regarding the playgrounds, which we, uh, have signage already ready to go, it's just whenever council wishes to open them back up. Um, wear the mask, stay socially distanced, uh, wash your hands before and after, no food or drink. Um, elderly need to stay away if there's people, um, outside of their household, um, at the playgrounds, and then, um, limiting your, um, usage of the playground for the kids to thirty minutes while others are waiting. Um, as far as our city staff would go, there's also things like, um, putting waiting areas outside of the playground, so people know, um, safely where to stand while they're waiting for, um, their turn, if you will, if there are, um, if the playgrounds have reached maximum occupancy, which is something else where we will, um, there is a way to figure out the max occupancy, uh, per playground, so we will post new signage on that as well. Um, and then the electrostatic, um, cleaning, the disinfecting will take place, um, every morning at the very least, and then, um, we'll be monitoring that as well, so those are the main things that we'll be taking, um, extra precautions on.
The, uh, the state guidelines with regard to the city's responsibilities just provide for basically posting responsibilities and marking responsibilities, and then some, uh, some more additional cleaning responsibilities. The rest of the responsibilities are placed on the parents and the users of the facilities.
So we do have the signage in English and Spanish, um, that have been, um, ordered and ready to be picked up and posted whenever there's a green light.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Well, your honor, in that case, if, since I was one always boasting that we should follow state guidelines, and if the state are, is allowing this, if, uh, Vice Mayor Flores want to amend her rec- her her, uh, recommendation, then I will amend mine to open up the playgrounds, you know, under tho- under those conditions.
I will amend my motion to include the parks with the state recommendations, the postings and everything in the guidelines, and to adhere.
Okay, thank you, and, and Councilmember Penialloza, did you have a, a a comment?
Uh, I did, just, I, I, I think it's, I'll just say that, I, I think we should, we should open them, uh, the state is allowed for it, I think, um, I've Um I've noticed uh that, you know, it's the impacts that the, you know, even as simple as taking a walk out, you know, it's very helpful and so especially for kids nowadays being in front of their screen uh Monday through Friday, you know, it's just, it's just, I think it's gonna be beneficial. Uh as long as we have all those uh protocols in place, which I think I appreciate Donnie for hopping on here for uh sharing with us what the state is mandating, of course, and how we're ready to roll that out. So um and I would like to just, I would like to see how how just like maybe an update as to like next, not maybe like a month from now, but just to see what the response is, like are people uh complying, uh are they, are they still going in the high numbers? Because I think we just got to gauge it and see how it goes, because if there's gonna be a hundred people and people are not following the guidelines that are there, then I think we should consider um taking some sort of action once that, if that were to happen, right? But at least for now, we hope that we can trust in uh the community to be responsible and to follow those guidelines that we're gonna be placing uh as we consider opening, opening up the playgrounds again for the kids and for families.
I agree, council.
Thank you for the comments and and Councilmember Carrillo, I'm not sure if you had anything to add as part of the ad hoc committee, but.
No, we got a pretty good overview there, but I just, I feel pretty confident in the steps that the the staff is having to make according to um adjusting to the state, adjusting their guidelines um like that. So I do want to say, you know, I'm pretty proud of the city's stance of adhering to those guidelines during all that time. I I think the main goal was to keep their um the community safe. And so, you know, adjusting back, at least we have staff members that are putting all those things into place. And that's the best we could do right now. And uh like uh Councilmember Penelosa said, just kind of monitor that and see how it it works out. I I agree with that.
If I may add, I want to thank Donnie for being ahead of the game, having this ready to go, you know, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. If I may, just one more thing. Um just for clarification, the skate um skate parks, they fall under the same guidelines as the playgrounds. And so in our skate park has been closed as well. So that was something else um for clarification on if we wanted to open those up at the same time or not.
Well, I like to include those if that's, you know, because, you know, those kids are, they're, I see bicyclists and skaters trying to get in there anyway, hopping the fence and uh we might as well open it up and as long as they can follow the guidelines and, you know.
I will once again amend to include the skate parks. Only a council member still will just go ahead and say, I second that again.
I second that again.
Okay, and with that, I think we can go ahead and uh call for the vote.
Councilmember Carrillo? Councilmember Penyloza? Councilmember Stowe? Vice Mayor Flores? Mayor Reyes?
Aye, passes five oh. Okay. Thank you. Uh that means we can move on to oral communications. Have we received any communications?
Your honor, if you would give me a moment just to look through our emails um to check.
You do have one attendee that is.
Yeah, yeah. So our uh through our emails, we don't have any kind of oral communications that have been submitted. However, we do have a raised hand on our attendee lead uh attendee list. And I can go ahead and bring him in at at the moment.
Please do.
Hello, this is Brock Neely, address on record. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
On the fireworks item, I was just curious uh if the booths pay any kind of surcharge to the city that would help cover the cost of enforcement. If not, then maybe something needs to be instituted in their processes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to just uh note that there is no other attendees or any communications or communications that it's available.
Okay, so then we can move on to other matters. Uh Councilmember Carrillo, do you have anything else?
Yeah, just something really brief. I wanted to let the council know. Um last week on Friday, the um January twenty ninth, I did a brief um interview with Hopper in the morning and it was pretty pleasant. We uh he asked just to check in as um now sitting on council, how it was going. And um I just did a brief overview of um, you know, still learning and um reviewing materials and um catching up on projects in process and um how helpful the mayor, vice mayor and uh council members have been. So I just wanted to let you all know that.
Thank you. Councilmember Stowe?
You know, I I I really don't have anything, but you know, I do want to remind everyone if they have opportunity to get the COVID shot to get it. Uh I hear a lot of people saying that they won't get it because of uh they're afraid of the side, you know, side effects, but it's gonna be more damaging to you if you get it than the shot will be. So, but if you have that opportunity to get it, so I, everyone would, you know, would just be positive and test negative would be great.
All right, very good. Councilmember Penyloza?
Yes, mayor. Um, well, I I'm gonna, I I wanted to just uh let folks know that um February is Black History Month and uh and one of the reasons why it's very close to my heart, uh recognizing uh you know, the contributions that uh African Americans have have given to our communities and to the nation is really important to me. You know, I I was able to travel to um like two years ago, uh before COVID, uh October two thousand nineteen to Montgomery, Alabama, uh to visit the Peace and Justice Memorial uh museum. That really um, you know, recognizes uh all the, all the um the terrorizing and the that happened to and and, you know, to happen to the African community uh in in the beginning of this country and slavery and and everything. And I think as we move forward, we 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 saw last year, you know, uh with so many protests that racial uh justice is still something that we need to continue to uplift, uh to focus and to be conscious of it. And I think black, uh you know, this month, Black History Month, February being it, um offers an opportunity for for us to do research, to learn uh to uh admire uh the contributions and the culture and the heritage of black Americans in our country. So um just wanted to uh to say that because I think it's important. Uh and then the other thing, the second thing is, I just, I do want to offer my condolences to uh every uh family and that's lost a loved one due to COVID in our county. Um you know, I I I lost someone two weeks, less than two weeks ago uh to to COVID nineteen, a close friend of mine, and it was so painful, it still very is. And and this kind of pain of losing someone to to COVID nineteen or to to, you know, when you lose someone in general, uh there's, there's nothing that, you know, that can uh, you know, make that pain go away and it hurts, right? So uh, you know, my condolences to each and every family that's lost a loved one. Uh and we got to continue to, to, you know, get vaccinated if you can. And you know, be as conscious as you can be when you're going outdoors, uh doing, you know, fi- uh following the guidelines that exist. Uh because, you know, I I think that uh I I see hope and light at the end of this uh this pandemic already, but we still have to continue being strong. So uh that's pretty much it. Thank you, mayor.
Hey, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to say that um in the last three weeks, there has been someone that I know that has either asked for prayers because they have been affected by COVID or their family member and um either one is critically ill and it could be of the husband and wife. When there's one that, you know, but they're having to deal with it. And so a lot of prayers are being asked right now. I got my uh first dose, my COVID vaccine on Friday, and I look forward to getting my second one in a few weeks. But I will say that I think we all need to do our part and be proactive and getting the vaccines. Now I'm gonna move into a different direction. In our reorganization that we had in December and we brought up our committee list, I would like to see our updated committee list be brought back to council. And I would like to, I know that there was a request to establish a city and a joint healthcare committee. And I'd like to see that we move in a direction of having a placement on that. And the other thing that I would like to see come back only because I believe it, we need to hear from um the Chamber of Commerce. I believe the report was already due and I'd like to get an update to that regard. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Uh if if I may, uh so that would be a council member requested agenda item, uh which if council approved it, it can be on as a scheduled matter. I just following the form of the council's handbook.
Oh, that would be what I would like.
The, so which one? I'm sorry, the joint healthcare uh committee formation or the?
The chamber.
Or the chamber or both?
Both.
Getting laid, I'm getting.
Yeah, both.
But we, we can't decide that tonight, can't do, uh we have to wait.
Can, you can vote if you want to vote tonight to set those for a future agenda. So there's two ways that council members can get something on. You can either take a vote tonight to set it on the next agenda or it can show up on the consent calendar for it to be put on a future agenda after that.
That, that's what I was clarifying.
I'll make the a motion that we, you know, set it tonight for the, for the, for the next agenda.
One second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to uh for those, for those two items, the the health, the joint healthcare and the chamber report to go on the next agenda. Okay, um so we can go ahead and uh call for the vote.
Councilmember Carrillo? Councilmember Penyloza? Councilmember Stowe? Vice Mayor Flores? Mayor Reyes?
Aye. Passes five oh, okay. So I um, I just had something that I I wanted to talk about too. I, on Wednesday, I, well, I I was approached late uh last week, but to to meet Wednesday to uh talk to a group of boy, our Cub Scouts um who were, who needed to talk to a local leader uh about concerns and and what they do and what had council works and what their job, how council works and what their job is. So I just want to let this group know that I had, I did address a group of Cub Scouts on, on Wednesday. But the reason I think that's significant is I was very excited because I had gone through Cub Scouts and through Boy Scouts. And I was excited to share my, my life experience, but it very rapidly, while talking to them about what we do and how things are going, I realized that it, this is a very depressing time and just in general um that a lot of the considerations that we we make now are are not always uh as as lively or jovial as some things had been in the past. And so I had to really um stop myself from being a a kind of a a bummer for for the youth. And uh I, you know, I I was able to answer their questions, but I I just wanted to point out that it's very difficult to uh to be uh jolly about things in a time that's tough. But I, they understood that. And and I could see by the looks on their face that they're facing some of the same things. Um I want to um acknowledge Councilmember Penyloza bringing up Black History Month. I I think that some of you know, but I spent uh many years playing uh music professionally. Uh I have a banjo over here with this special specialty in uh early jazz, which is most people know, um Africans and African Americans um played a very strong role in developing a lot of the early American music, uh so much so that it was adopted by uh lots of other cultures. Um and and we see that throughout all of our music today. So if you are looking for something to take you out of today's uh could semi-depressing or maybe even very depressing times, I encourage you to listen to King Oliver or Louis Armstrong or perhaps Cab Calloway. And if you want something a little more recent, Count Basie or Duke Ellington. Uh because the way, the the energy that's put into that music and writing that music, it it takes, it takes a lot of those trials, a lot of those challenges. And and a lot of uh the uh the sadness that comes along with with the experience they had developing into those musicians and and playing professionally and translates it into something that can take you to another place. So I want to encourage you to to study the culture through music, um i- if not just strictly through history. And um and of course, um sadly, as part of that, as these musicians who I've played with through the years um grow older and seeing them um lose their battles with with just with other health issues, but um seeing them lose their battle with COVID uh I think is uh even even more poignant and um and a loss that um is even more tragic. So I just wanted to point that out um and and thank, thank everybody. I know the staff has been on here um all night. I know it's been a long meeting. Um sometimes the, I think the, the three to five second delay between interactions uh in Zoom can add up to over an hour's worth of extended time. So I want to appreciate everybody that's been on, on the meeting and hung with us so far to uh create the input that that helps us guide our decisions um and it keeps Porterville afloat. And with that, I'll I'll turn it over to the city manager for any comments he has.
Really, my only comment, and I probably should have mentioned it during the the COVID item, was just that we continue to offer the community testing, uh walk-up community, community testing site, uh which we've relocated to the to the parking lot uh at Second and Thurman. City staff continues to be, and their families continues to be the primary population that's taking advantage of that testing site. So I'm just really encouraged, that's an opportunity on a weekly basis for any member of the community to just walk up and be tested and get results usually within forty-eight hours. Uh we are looking at having um two weeks from now, the second week, or third, pardon me, third week of uh February, having a, for an entire week for twelve hours a day, a bus that will be out there, able to do hundreds, up to five hundred tests that day. Working on those logistics uh and things of that nature. But I just want to, and want to thank the city staff that have been partnering with the county and off, and supporting that testing site. There isn't any other city that is supporting a testing site.
Is that daily, John?
It's on, it's on Tuesdays. Testing Tuesdays or?
Okay, and with that, I think we can adjourn the meeting. Uh the next meeting is February sixteenth. And I hope to see you all there. Meeting adjourned.